I'm going to call to order the November 13th, 2023 school committee meeting. The second item on the agenda is to enter into executive session, so I'll take a motion.
I will motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21a3 for the purposes of to approve minutes from the executive session held October 30th, 2023 as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
I so declare.
Also to provide an update on negotiations with HEA units A, B, C, and D as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
I so declare.
And to finally, to discuss strategy with respect to interventionist tutor negotiations as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
I so declare. All right, all those in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay. We are. Good evening. We are reconvening, returning to open session from our executive session. Tonight is the November 13th, 2023 school committee meeting. I am going to just read the statement. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. We have Harbor Media recording, and we are recording on Zoom. Is there anyone in the audience or online who is also recording? If you could throw your hand up. And Matt, if you can let me know if anybody... No. Okay. All right, great. So the participants on Zoom know we are having connection issues. We cannot put up on the screen any of the attachments that we have in our packet tonight, but we're hoping to work on it as the meeting continues. So hopefully that will happen shortly. On Zoom, you can share it. Okay, Zoom will be sharing. We will not see it up on the screen here.
Zoom is fine.
In the audience, and the audience will not be able to see.
We're working on it.
Okay. Okay, we're working on it. Okay, so while they work on that, I am going to move to item number four, which is approval of the minutes. We have three sets of minutes on tonight's agenda. We're going to table one of them. We're going to table 4.2, so we'll work on 4.1, which is the meeting that was held on October 16th, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on October 16th.
I will second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those are approved. Then we're going to skip over 4.2. We'll go to 4.3, which is minutes of the school committee joint meeting with the student advisory committee held on November 1st, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the joint meeting with the student advisory committee that was held on November 1st.
I will second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, those are approved. Okay. So item five, this is where we set aside 15 minutes to take questions and comments for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Our practice is to take questions and comments during new business items that are on the agenda. If you can raise your hand if you would like to be recognized. I see somebody in the audience, so we'll go back and forth between the audience and Zoom. So Ben, if you could state your name and address, that would be great. And then... Second?
Oh, yeah. You're not answering.
Yes, sorry, sorry. I do need to...
I read the whole legal thing. And also rearrange some furniture while we're... Sorry.
Okay, so since we do have people who are coming up to ask questions or comment, I'm going to read the statement. The Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at the meeting. In addition, we have set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of this meeting for comments or questions that fall under the purview of the school committee and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guest wishes to speak, please raise your hand, state your name and address, and address your comments to the chairperson. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to the topics within the scope of the responsibility of the school committee. As established by the Massachusetts General Laws, the responsibility of the school committee are to: 1. Select and evaluate the superintendent; 2. Review and approve budgets for public education in the district; and 3. Establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy interests of others. The public comment period is not a time for debate or response to comments by the school committee. The school committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. In addition to this public comment period, the school committee practice provides time for questions and comments from the public on new business items on the agenda. Okay, and we are now up and running as well, so we can all see everything. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for setting aside this time. I think it's important to have this public access, so I appreciate that. Ben Lockheim, 15 Gardner Street, parent and teacher in the town. I have several questions, so bear with me here, please, if you could. Most of the questions are in regards to communication with the town. I'd like to make clear that it's communications in regards to school contract negotiations. So I'm very supportive of the school committee and your communication with the town. I think that's essential, so I'm just specifically talking about communications as far as the contract negotiations. So I first have a set of questions, and this can, please, anyone feel free to answer. What was the process in deciding to use the listserv or the massive email chain that has access to essentially every family in Hingham as far as updates for school contract negotiations? That was not past practice, so I guess I'm asking, when did that change happen? How did it happen? Who made those decisions? And I'm asking right now. For these negotiations, the email server was...
We're not at liberty to answer the questions at the time, but we'll take down your comments and your questions, and we can...
You can't answer any questions that I have right now?
Dr. Adams, it's not our practice to?
It's not on the agenda.
So that's the...
The agenda's school contract negotiations, right? Isn't communications about the...
That's not on the agenda tonight.
So you can't answer any questions in regards to the school contract?
Yeah. So in the statement that the chair reads at the beginning, that's part of it, and it's by Massachusetts General Law, because if it hadn't been on the agenda, it can't be discussed during public comment periods. We can hear the questions, and then we could either put it on an upcoming agenda to answer, or we could just reach out to people individually and provide the answers.
Could you give like a reasonable amount of time that you can get back to me with these questions that I have?
We can address it at the next school committee meeting. We can put it out in the agenda for the next school committee meeting and address it then.
Okay, yeah, I'd love to have these on record.
Sure.
So, as I said right there, the process in doing this, which was not past practice, and sending out this massive email list to all parents on school contract negotiations, I'd love an update on that. Another question in regards to that, who decides what goes... I know, Ness, you sign each email, and it says "school committee" underneath. Is there a communication correspondence in regards to what emails go out and what goes into the email? I know, Ness, you said during office hours that the lawyer wrote parts, or if not parts, all of the October 17th letter that was sent out with several inaccuracies, and, you know, that was later corrected. So I would just like to know the typical process and how that information gets out to the masses. And I guess, I was hoping to get this, but what's your overall goal in using that listserv, and why are we breaking away from past practice and doing that this time? Sorry, I have several questions here. I want to make sure I cover all of them. Would you have, so if the goal, which I hope is for transparency and accuracy, would you have union leadership review these emails before they're sent out and correspond as far as to make sure that they are incredibly accurate, because we've seen in the past that there is omissions, inaccuracies, things that need to be later corrected? So I'd hope that, as I assume we're searching for the truth, that it'd be better to have all the parties involved. To go with a question that I asked before, and these are kind of hitting me as I'm going through my notes, it's signed as Ness who is sending it out to the community. Ness is not involved in negotiations, so would it be more helpful to have someone who's directly involved in negotiations to have that communication? Some other things that I'd like to, I guess, and there's no chance to respond, but something that I'd like to, hopefully you guys can change, and you don't have to address it now, but I guess at some other point. There's a direct quote that I have from the school committee frequently asked questions. This is in regards to salaries. And the salaries are, I'll just read from where it picks up. The salaries are to reflect the value of the town of Hingham places on education for Hingham teachers. Salaries are at the high end of teacher salaries compared to our benchmark towns even when factoring in the cost of benefits. That, as we established at our last negotiations, is factually inaccurate. If you factor in the cost of benefits, we as teachers pay $6,000 more than most of the benchmark, or all of the benchmark towns, on average $6,000. We pay 21% more out of pocket. If we factor in the cost of benefits, which is said in that frequently asked questions, we are either on the bottom third or last in most or all the steps. So I would, I guess my question is, can that be corrected? And I would hope that we would go beyond just correcting the removal, and I anticipate what's going to happen is, you know, you guys will remove the part that says, even with the cost, sorry, I want to be accurate, even when factoring in the cost of benefits, I would hope that we'd go beyond, if we're pushing towards accuracy, going beyond just removing that, because an omission and not telling the full story is also in itself inaccurate. So my question is, can we push towards accuracy for that? Because parents are searching for the truth, and you have at your disposal something that can be sent with one click to every home, and the website, parents frequently look to find the truth. And I want us to push more towards the truth, bring union leadership in maybe at certain parts, especially the email that goes to every household. Last question, would, or maybe not my last question, I have to look over and see if I have any more. Would union leadership, or I'm sorry, would you be willing to give union leadership access to, if we're opening up so that the school committee can send an email, you know, at any point out to the entire community and hit every home? Can union leadership have that same email list? And if not, why not? Just want to make sure I'm not missing any questions. Oh, so the frequently asked question and the answer to that, that these benchmark towns were, you know, that teachers were being paid on the high end of these benchmark towns, how did we come to those calculations? How did you guys reach that conclusion? I guess that's my question there. And I could go over the specifics, but I don't want to read through all that, but I'll do a little bit. For the master's minimum, without any, you know, masters is at their base value, we're 11 out of 11 factoring in cost of healthcare. For the master's maximum amount of years, we're 10 out of 11. For the masters plus 30, we're 8 out of 11. For the masters, that's minimum, for the masters maximum, we're 7 out of 11. Doctorate, we're 7 out of 10 benchmark towns. Doctorate max, we're 6 out of 10 benchmark towns. So I think it's important to tell the full story, and I'm afraid that you're going to omit part of the story in order to tell your side of the story. And I think that that is where, as a parent, I would start to, I've already frankly started to lose trust, but I don't want to lose anymore, so I guess I have several questions as to how we can make sure we're telling the full story. So you said that you would update us with answers at the next school committee meeting? Okay. And I guess I would ask that, if Ness is the one writing it, that I would hope that, I'm not sure the process and procedures, I know that there are several steps to sending out these emails. I would hope that maybe in private session, or if there's some kind of better correspondence to make sure that we are getting closer to accuracy, that would be encouraged. And I guess I'd like some more transparency on how those emails get sent out. Those are all my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, one more question. How will that be addressed in the next meeting?
We will put it on the agenda, and we will go through these questions. Dr. Adams and I will sit down first and go through this and start to answer them.
Well, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
So that we can answer them at the next meeting.
Will there be a chance at the next meeting to ask questions about the information that you provide?
Since it's on the agenda, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep. Okay. Anyone else want to... If you can raise your hand, if you're online, if you would like to be recognized. Give it a second. No? Okay. So we are going to move on to item six, but before moving on, I'd like to share a few words. I read this line recently, "People's trust in each other and their institutions is fundamental to an effective democracy," as Ben pointed out. "Each member of the school committee campaigned and remains in our position because we hold the best interest of our community, its children and their collective futures in our minds and hearts, and are motivated to serve because of it. We were each elected by the voting majority within this community who, through your vote, expressed your confidence in us to carry out the duties of this committee. Hingham Public Schools has worked very hard to maintain and strengthen community confidence with increased from school leaders, with increased communication from school leaders and the superintendent, particularly over the past year and a half. The strategic plan encapsulates the district's benchmarks and goals. This group, the Hingham School Committee, has also worked very hard to strengthen our relationship with the public. We advocated for the new elementary school and the budget override. We continue to hold unprecedented office hours, send electronic recaps of our meetings, respond to emails, take phone calls, and meet with engaged citizens. Last week, we gathered multiple agency leaders to collectively address recent community concerns and answer questions regarding town, police, and school policy. The only means to achieve an effective democracy, and in this case, an effective public school district, is through respectful communication. On behalf of the committee, please continue to work with us to strengthen our community schools. Please continue to reach out to each one of us with phone calls, emails, and/or requests for meetings. Please continue to attend our public meetings in our office hours. We wish to thank you for the tremendous support we received over these past two weeks. We will continue to carry out our responsibility with the whole community's faith and trust guiding us through each one of our decisions. We represent you, our community as a whole. Thank you." Item six, superintendent's report.
So to provide an update on the incident with the rest of the employee on October 27th at the middle school, at the office hours, that happened on Wednesday, we shared a commitment to review human resources procedures. That work has started in earnest. We've initiated Pam Gould, who is a retired superintendent and former human resource director, highly recommended by Gary Maestris, past interim superintendent, who's been mentoring our human resource coordinator, to do a review of the situation and an audit of how we onboard our substitutes in addition to a review of the incident. She's already started that work. She was here last week, did review of documents as well as interviews of central office. This week, she's doing interviews of principals, and she'll do some additional interviews through the week. We expect her to have a report, hopefully by the end of this month, if not at the December meeting at the latest. She, in addition, has committed to also continuing that deep audit of other human resource procedures and processes as well. Today, we initiated having a weekly or bi-weekly meeting with the police chief to increase our communication with the Hingham Police Department so that we can continue to find ways to collaborate in order to ensure the safety of our students. So that work is underway, and that report by Pam will be to the full school committee with the opportunity to engage in dialogue, both about the incident and then later on in the school year around human resources. Anything that we find or needs immediate attention or actions that we can immediately undertake, we're not waiting till later in the spring. We're doing that work throughout the year. As I had shared, this was part of one of my goals earlier on in the school year, to improve human resources in our processes and procedures, and it was part of my entry plan as well. So that work is continuing, and we've sped up and tried to accelerate some of that work as well. I shared at that meeting as well that Catherine Cody was quarried at the beginning of her employment. In February, we had a letter of suitability from another district indicating that she had completed a national fingerprint background check. Our previous HR director would have done some onboarding of her as well as some screening before she began her work. So during my entry process, that's what I understood, the process for substitutes. I've shared earlier that we've done some things already to improve our substitute process, including the revision of our substitute handbook earlier this year. We've created a training module that we've already done once, and this week are doing a second group of substitute training. So we're trying to continue to work on those processes and procedures as we move forward. As well as thinking with the police and our security team, we have a security team that meets on a monthly basis, and that security team, we've been working a bit on communications, and we'll keep working on strengthening our processes and procedures around communication in relation to safety with our partners at the Hingham Police Department.
Yeah, I think that's a great update, and I think as the committee, we will wait for the report from Pam Gould and then continue conversations and questions.
Some other updates. We want to thank all our students who celebrated the contributions of our veterans in our community last week. Schools had a variety of assemblies to honor our veterans through poetry, care packages, letters, and songs. And of all the things we teach our young people, to honor our veterans and those who have given sacrifice for our nation, I think it's one of the most important lessons, and I'm very proud of all our staff and students who were involved. Members of the school building committee also met with owners, the owner's project manager, and school staff, and representatives of the contractors with the MSBA to discuss the project, the new elementary building, the elementary school building. We were able to do a walkthrough of the project. All of the steel has been erected. The contractor will begin to, you'll begin to see the project enclosed over the next few weeks. The geothermal well drilling is completed, and as of now, we'll knock on wood, the project is on schedule and progressing. We're beginning to have fun discussions about furniture and the purchasing of furniture, and in the next couple of weeks, there'll be some samples delivered to the foster as well as opportunities for staff to look at final purchases and give feedback on the furniture purchases for the new building. We've begun meeting individually in small groups to prepare and discuss the budget for FY '25. We've been reviewing staffing ratios and needs in student services, and in the coming week, we'll continue that work with transportation and technology department heads, including the high school and middle school leadership, to continue our preparations for the FY '25 budget. Per state requirements as well, we've engaged a bullying plan task force. Every two years, we're required to convene a bullying task force to refine our bullying plan. The regulations state that we should be soliciting input from various stakeholders, so we'll be doing that. The first meeting is this week, and we'll facilitate a process for gathering feedback from the community. This was a component of our strategic plan as well that we wanted to make sure to start undertaking.
It's actually the 28th.
Oh, sorry. Wrong week. Later this month.
In the moment of panic.
Later this month. It's also, just to share a little bit about my student shadows, it's been my pleasure to complete student shadows at all of the schools over the past few months. I've completed all my rounds. My last shadow was of a kindergarten class at South, and I've really enjoyed that opportunity. It's a process that allows our school leaders, our district leaders, to place themselves in the shoes of our students and see from their eyes strategies for improving the experience of our students. The dates are fast approaching for the high school drama production of Little Shop of Horrors on November 30th, December 1st and 2nd. I believe tickets are currently on sale, so it's a not-to-miss show right here in Hingham. I like to say, the best arts are local arts, best theater is local theater. Also, thank you to the Hingham Ed Foundation for the opportunity for our 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders to showcase their spelling skills. Thank you to our elementary principals and other community leaders, including members of the school committee, who supported the event in various ways. Our structured immersion program exploratory committee has been meeting. We've generated a set of questions. We've been looking at some research on immersion programs, language immersion programs. The committee, a small group of them, have visited Milton and Holliston French immersion programs. A small team will be traveling to Mendon Upton this week to learn more about their program. We'll also organize a short survey of families to gauge interest in the program as well. So we're excited to continue to explore that idea. I'm going to start to do this sort of format for the reports as a way to sort of summarize some highlights of things that we really want to highlight and be proud of. Also, I think in a version in the coming, I might also make some connections to the strategic plan when they're applicable as well. So you'll see that in the next version as well.
Yeah, there's your stuff. Thank you. Did you want to mention spelling? Sorry, just thought that was a little...
She did.
Oh, she did. I'm sorry. Okay. Mendon Upton, is that also a French immersion, or is that Spanish?
That one's Spanish.
It is Spanish, okay. Just curious.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. All right, we'll move over to communications. Item seven, 7.1, communications received by the superintendent. Okay. 7.2, student communications. So we've got Alex, we've got two students here tonight, Alex Doggett and Tony Sisarone. Thank you, welcome.
All right, so the student council sponsored a USA Spirit Day to honor veterans this past Thursday ahead of Veterans Day. The field hockey team, the girls' soccer team, and boys' soccer team all hosted and won two playoff games apiece this past week, and all three teams are advancing to quarterfinals of their respective state tournaments. The HHS Unified Basketball Team competed with members of the Hingham Police Department in a charity basketball game this past Thursday. Admission was free, but there was a raffle and a half-court shot competition, raising funds for the school's unified sports programs. The student advisory committee met this past Thursday to discuss poll results from student council, and we'll look into their concerns and consider any possible solutions to present. And also recently, this past Tuesday, we had the end of the first quarter at the high school, so first-term grades will be all in tomorrow. And the annual holiday fair will be this Saturday on the 18th, where we get to see a bunch of local artists and local businesses sell their products along with student fundraisers. And the counseling department will begin universal screening for mental health concerns when it administers the Strength and Difficulties questionnaire later this month. And I think that just about covers it.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you so much. 7.3, other communications. So I do have a few things to report. I was copied on a letter sent by the HEA Unit B to the select board and advisory committee, and then the full committee received an email today as well as the select board and advisory. They were sent an email from a former school committee member who served on salary negotiations for three contract negotiations and the COVID negotiations. She wanted to provide context to the statement made by the HEA. And then the last thing, I started receiving some emails from students related to their civics projects, so I'm looking forward to touching base with Dr. Adams on some important things that have come up. So thank you. Okay, so item eight. Yes, sorry.
Just because I see some people on here, and I know we're not going to discuss it today, but, you know, we all obviously got a lot of communications around the incident at the middle school, and so I just wanted to recognize that, and obviously, we're happy that this report is being done and look forward to having the discussion.
Thanks.
I always found it weird when I wasn't on the committee and I was sending emails and... Obviously, we're happy that this report is being done and look forward to having the discussion.
Thanks.
I always found it weird when I wasn't on the committee and I was sending emails.
If we address it somewhere else in the agenda, but you're right. Yes. That's a good point. Anyone else? Sorry, I should have asked you guys. No? Okay, thank you. So item eight, unfinished business. So 8.1 to complete a second read of policy JBB, educational equity and act as appropriate. This one is, Ally Anderson had taken us through it at our last meeting. So this is to discuss.
Yep. The second read, we did, I did make the updates with the numbering that was off. And we had some sample policies from other districts that were in the packet last time as well. So those are no longer in there and this is the final draft version. If anyone wants to discuss or ask questions.
Anybody have any questions? Comments? No? Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve policy JBB related to educational equity.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those are approved. Thank you, Ally. All right, item nine, 9.1 to present an update on the Plymouth River Elementary School Improvement Plan and act as appropriate. So I assume Greg LaMoth and, oh, I see Melissa Smith, but Greg LaMoth is coming up. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
So the first thing I'll have you just notice is that our wizard did have a little bit of an update. He had a wardrobe change after 20 years. The students got to vote on it. Ally Anderson was our person who overlooked the elections to make sure there was no fraud in our elections. They had three options and this is what the students chose for the new look of our wizard and to give it more of the Hingham colors. So just wanted to share that with you as well. We had our own democratic process at the school. So as I lead you through this, I'll go through the four goals that we had just so you can, so I can remind you what those goals were. Goal number one was an academic goal, was to implement the new schedule built across the four elementary schools while configuring the multi-tiered systems of support schedule to help build upon and improve the skills of all of our students. The second one was a social emotional goal. That social emotional goal was to improve and support the social emotional skills of all students and to ensure growth within the social emotional behavioral and academic domains. Our third goal was talking about connections. And connections were to build and grow a healthy, equitable, and inclusive community that strengthens the school culture to allow for social, emotional, physical, and academic wellness for all students, staff, and anyone with a connection to the PRS community. And our final goal was on UDL, Universal Design for Learning. And it was to increase the depth of understanding and implementation of UDL practices that will help support students' ability to show what they have learned or how information is presented to them in various ways. So for the first goal, which is academic, it's connected to spoke two of the strategic objective. I'm not going to read through that because we have looked at that before, but just to say that we, our goals are all aligned to the strategic plan. So when we look at this, sort of I focused on a couple of things that we've done so far and some things that are in progress. So we had to create and implement a unified elementary schedule. When we created and implemented that schedule, that was completed in July of 2023. Once we completed that schedule, I took it upon me to meet with my math specialists and reading specialists to say, how does this fit in with our tier one, tier two, and tier three for meeting our MTSS responsibilities? Once we looked at that, I then met with grade level teams and I met with the special education teams, wanting to see how does this look for you and what does that schedule look like for each grade level? And how does it meet the needs of our special education population to make sure that we could meet the needs of the B and C grid services for all of our students? Once we did that, that schedule was complete for last year. We did do a tweak this year and I foresee that we'll continue to tweak it as we go along to make sure that we're meeting all the needs of our students. Another, one of the action steps on it was to implement the master schedule and monitor data meetings. We held three data meetings at the beginning of, so for last year, and we've already had one data meeting this year to look at our tier two and our tier three groupings, how are we moving students around, how are we flexibly grouping them around classrooms? I like to look at our HTS or our MTSS as sort of flexibly grouping. At PRS is what we do is we have our literacy specialists, our two interventionists, and then I'd say if we had three classrooms, three classrooms. We sort of look how we're going to separate those students, but then we just don't say, okay, we're going to take these kids and put them with the reading specialist, these kids and put them with an interventionist, these kids put them with the interventionist, and everyone's just going to work with the teacher in their room. We really look at what those students need and then we flexibly group them amongst those three teachers as well and then do small stations within the classroom. So we're really getting small group instruction, using some of our specialists for help, using the teachers for help, using everyone around the room. It's basically all hands on deck when we do that to make sure that all students are getting the support that we need when we're doing that intervention. And they're not just staying in one room, we're flexibly grouping everyone. So at the same time, our special ed students may be going out for their C grid services. And so no one knows who's like, who's a special ed student, who's a gen ed student, who's, because everyone's moving at the same time. So that was part of the process of that. Also, we provided at the end of last, throughout the year, we provided coverage for those teachers to meet an hour at a time to look at the data and see how to move students around. This year, what we've been able to do is, so that part's been completed. This year, we've added PLCs. And as part of PLCs, the math specialist runs a PLC that runs the six-day cycle. Then the reading specialist runs a PLC for the six-day cycle. Then the admin runs one, and then the writing specialist. So during those PLCs, we're able to look at data even more. So it's not just happening three times, it's happening basically once a month. So we're able to really look at our students and see where they've grown and where some may have started to slide and catch them right away in that process.
And what is a PLC?
Professional learning community.
Thank you.
So part of that still is holding the data meetings. So students groups were created during the data meetings and then teams start making appropriate adjustments and like, oh, well, they may have not done well here, but what I'm seeing in class is this, 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 and this. So maybe they didn't do really well on a test and we're not going to base it just on one thing. So we look at multiple data points when we're placing our students. And then the last thing, which is in, as you see, the status is in progress there as the same as adjusting students. As part of the action step, as we said, is to create a survey to see how the new schedule and MTSS compared to data from MCAS and iReady. So sort of when we look at our iReady data and when we look at our MCAS data, do those match? And does that ability for the teachers to say like, our schedule is also working, but this is, last year was the first year that we had that data. So now we have to look at what's the right way to build that survey. So that will be one of the things that I'm going to be tasking with the school council is to build it there. And then from there, build it out to our teachers and say, what do you see? What do you, what sort of questions do you want to see before we, you know, put it out to everyone? So I would go to my faculty council, which is a leader in every grade level. So a couple just, this is what our master schedule looks like, just so people can sort of see the master schedule. I work in colors and blocks and sort of that's how my mind works. So anything in red is reading, anything in math, I'm sorry, anything in blue is math. Our yellow is lunch and recess. Our green is our specialists. And then our orange is science and social studies. And so what you sort of, as I built the schedule, I looked at it as there's a 60-minute block of reading and then a 30-minute block of TRI and tried to keep that all together so it's consistent for the students. And the same thing for math, tried to keep it together as much as I possibly could. Lunches or specialists would sometimes get in the way of keeping it the same. But if we look at something like grade one, they have math, then they go to snack recess and then they come back and they finish their math. So still keeping it together, even if there's an interruption of lunch recess or they're going to specials. So that's just a snapshot of what the schedule looks like from kindergarten through fifth grade. So our second one, which, our second goal, that was the one that was social emotional. Here's how it relates to the strategic plan, spoke number two, ensuring student success. What are some things that we did? Creating a bi-monthly school-wide schedule to align to teach the toolbox tools. So the guidance counselor and I worked together on their schedule. Built into her schedule is a 30-minute block every six-day cycle that she hits every classroom and she does a toolbox lesson with them. And then once she's made it through those toolbox lessons, she works with the teachers saying, this class needs some more help on the breathing tool, this class needs some more help on the garbage can tool, or this class needs some more help on, there are some issues that are happening on the playground, how can we work these? Can you find some lessons to work with them on that? So we are always in the process. So you know, that part is complete of looking at the tools in the toolbox. We are always reteaching them every year, but how can she now reinforce and help teachers? And how can she build upon what they already learned? So it doesn't become the same sort of dry, here's the breathing tool, breathe in, breathe out. You know, making it age-appropriate and building it on.
This is the fifth year we've been using the toolbox tool, right?
I've only been here three, so I'm going to hope, yes.
Okay. I remember the rollout.
Mary Sandfar.
Okay. I think it was, yeah. So my point of that is that this is the first year where the fifth graders in your school have had the toolbox their entire elementary career. So it's like, I didn't know if that was a useful observation about how it's taken to the community or...
Well, it is a good observation. It's also one that we're seeing that fourth and fifth grade is where they're going, yeah, I know, let me use my breathing tool. So how do we enhance that to make it better? And so that's what we're sort of working with the guidance counselors at all the time. Like how can we build these to be age-appropriate so it's useful for all of our students? Our guidance counselor needed to get trained at the beginning of the year in toolbox. She also attended round one of the restorative justice training and she attended training for everyday speech. They were to use some of those tools there. Those have been all completed and so we're still now, now we're working on how do we refine some of those toolbox to meet the needs of all of our students. Book enrichment shows that pertain to, so book enrichment shows that pertain to social emotional development and school-wide assemblies and weekly meetings. Our enrichment coordinator with our PTO will build a lot, bringing in a lot of things. Langkabrah, Pout Pout Fish. And then she'll come and say like, was that useful? Was that worthwhile? Should we bring them back? So we do a lot of communication on what we're bringing into the school, how does it relate to the curriculum and was it worthwhile or was it not worthwhile? And should we bring them back again? So we are in constant communication there. All-school meeting is another piece that if anyone ever has a chance, it's always on our day 1A. But it is probably one of the things that I enjoy the most. You get all of the students in one area at the same time, sharing everyone's birthdays. So we do, we sing happy birthday to everyone through a certain amount of, we pick certain days and if you have a birthday, they get to come up, say their birthday, say their name. Students and students or whole class present certain things that they're proud of, that they've done during that past, or teachers will choose something to work on. Or if they're raising money for funds for Ukraine, or they raised money for funds for Hawaii, they did a sort of presentation there. And it just builds a really great community. And so we continue to build that community. And then lastly, which is being cut off, as you can see, is morning announcements highlighting Awareness Month. So as we make the announcements, we always do like a thoughtful Thursday, a funny Friday, but things where we can add in, if it's African-American History Month, if it's Autism Awareness Month, we sort of add in, did you know? So Wednesdays are worldly Wednesdays, so we'll add something there about it. So that will just help the students know, understand, like we're sort of driving that bus to have them have a larger global understanding as we celebrate those months. And then our student support team, couple of things that we've done, we've worked with the whole admin team to recreate the district-wide elementary letters for absences and tardies. It was a pretty lengthy, arduous letter and we sort of cut that down into a nice, easy letter to look at. Everyday one, myself and the team, we look and we discuss any social emotional status for all of our students and how can we support students and staff? Is there anyone sort of bubbling up on that list? How can we support them? Who's like, who's going to be the point person or the target person for that student? And then discuss upcoming building-wide or grade-level lessons and how to support them. So an example, this one was a new puberty lesson that was rolled out last year. How could we support the nurse in rolling out that lesson? And as we did that, myself, Melissa, our school psychologist, our school guidance counselor, adjustment counselor, all went into those lessons to sort of give that support just in case there was any sort of questions that either, not that they couldn't answer, but that was awkward for them. We had, they had another adult in the room to help them out. And so this is just the toolbox tools. Most classrooms have these tools in there. We do need to look at getting more posters for the classrooms with the changing of teachers and all that. Some of those posters have gone awry somewhere, but I think it would be helpful to get those posters. And then this is just, again, speaking about the restorative practices that the guidance counselor went to, to be trained in the first session. The strategic plan number three is about communication. So how it connected to spoke one, culture and collaboration of the community, and spoke three, healthy, equitable, and inclusive communities. So for here, some of the things that we talked about is increasing our social media presence so community can see the happenings that go on at PRS. We send out a weekly smore to our parents, making sure we can give them as much information as possible. In that smore, we put what days of the week are coming up, we put when there are half-days, what classrooms are going on field trips, if there's having any work that's happening or classes are going to the garden, everything that a parent needs to know. So when they look at it, they say like, oh, I should give my kid boots because they're going out to the garden and it's going to be a rainy day, but we're still going. So we're trying to keep that communication open. We're using, we used to just use Twitter or what's now known as X mostly, but we've now use Instagram and Facebook. And now that we can use Instagram in the school as administrators, it's really easy to do an Instagram post right away and it also connects straight to Facebook. So we're double hitting it at the same time to showcase our student work and organizations that come in, that enrich the lives of what our children are learning every day. And the smore is sent out. Also, we do separate smores for special events. So when we're talking about parents logging into Aspen and getting an Aspen account, we sent out a separate smore for that. For the report card that we have to send out, we sent out a separate smore for that. So we really try to think of other ways to use this more and not to just use it on a Fridays as a weekly send-out, but ways to make sure that the whole community at PRS is getting all of this information. One of the things that was started before me by Ms. Smith, and I've continued to do it, it's become something that staff look for and they'll say like, oh, you forgot this. And I keep, I do remind them, it's editable, you can just add it in yourself, but it's okay, thanks for reminding me and it's helpful for me, is we send out a week ahead. So sort of like the same thing we do for the parents, but we send out a week ahead for the teachers that has a chart in it. And that week ahead literally says like, day one, it's going to, Monday's a day one, so that's grade one PLC for math. So we remind them which PLC it is and who it is. And we've tried to follow. So the professional learning community is day one is grade one, day two is grade two, grade three. So that's easily remembered. It's just now remembering who's gone last and who's up, sort of who's up next. We keep a district and school calendar up to date on the school's website to make sure that that is, so parents can always go to our website if they need to to look at that. But we are finding we're getting more looking at the smore and following what's in the smore than we are in the website. And then part of this week ahead, it's a running Google document that staff can go back to. So if they say like, oh, he put in the week ahead that I have to use operations heroes to put something in for maintenance, I can go back and find that and do a quick search on that Google doc and I can find it. So it's a continuous running document for the staff for that year. And that's in progress because it's every week I'm doing that. Create and maintain a welcome environment. So we had PD on safe schools that the staff really took to. As part of that, I also created a PRS pride decal that accompanied with them with a letter that said, we just went through this training. As part of that training, you know, we need to make safe spaces for our school. If you feel comfortable putting this on your door as a safe space for students to come and speak with you, feel comfortable to do that. If you don't feel comfortable and you don't want to have it up, you can put this decal and sticker back in my mailbox, not even going to notice who's did it. Don't worry about it. I'm not looking to see who has a sticker, who doesn't. It's, we want to have spaces where students feel safe talking to someone. And if you don't feel comfortable, I don't want anyone to feel forced to talk about a conversation that they're not comfortable talking about. As part of the smores, translation is embedded into the smores and also for our, any sort of our meetings. So we have conferences coming up for our open houses, for our curriculum nights. We secure, we worked with Erica Pollard to make sure that we secured translators for our parents so they were informed at those meetings. And then the last piece is through our equity work that we've been doing, that we do have a, we have a case study book. And so as our first PLC that we did, we took one of the case studies that was talking about teaching Thanksgiving and doing that with our staff to sort of think about like... And so as our first PLC that we did, we took one of the case studies that was talking about teaching Thanksgiving and doing that with our staff to sort of think about, like, we teach Thanksgiving this way, but let's look at it from another route. And the whole, the whole part of that case study PLC was, some people don't look at Thanksgiving as being a happy moment, but they think about it at a time of mourning. When we say happy Thanksgiving, is it really happy? Like, how do you address all those sort of situations? And at the end, there's sort of some answers to what you think about, but it leads to some great conversation. And we hope to use that some more during our PLCs and during faculty meeting. So that's why that says still in progress. And then something that I implemented from a school that I had taken and built before I came here, we had called it something else, but here we're calling it PRS Pals. We had 25 staff members participate and remember this. So this was building community and building up our school. That it's sort of like a secret buddy. So every staff fills out a list of like, what's your favorite book? What's your favorite, what's something you haven't done before? And from there, Melissa takes half and I take half because we both participate in it. So I don't know who my secret person is. And then once, once a month, you spend somewhere from $10 to $15 and someone else delivers it. And if they knew you had a bad day the day before, if you just needed a pick-me-up, or there's a holiday coming up and you thought, oh, I've got something really, like, there's just some gift that's ended up on your desk or in your mailbox and it just says, from your secret pal. And it's just helped build morale around the school. And when you know that someone's having a down day and like, they get this gift from their pal and all of a sudden you see that smile light up on their face. And then when we noticed how successful it was in the school, we expanded it out to the elementary leadership team since half of us were brand-new. We said, well, what's, what's the best way to learn about each other? Is let's do this secret sort of pal thing. And it got us to know more about people that we didn't know about. And so that we haven't started yet this year, the elementary one. But that's, that's coming. There's just a lot of things on my plate to get started before I could start the elementary one. But overall, that was a, it was a program that really helped build, build community there. So just some sort of things, like here's a bunch of pictures that show like where all of our Facebook posts. Here's Twitter or X. These are Instagram posts. And then this is our PRS wheel. And then this was the decal that I gave to all staff if they wanted to put it on their door. They had a PRS wheel to put on there. All right, and then number four. Oh, and this was one more thing that I did for staff. For Staff Appreciation Week, last year I did a candy bar. This year I did a trail, so my interim year I did a candy bar. Then my first year as principal, I know it seems so long ago. I did, I did trail mix, just to show them that they're appreciated and it also builds community. Every so often, I do like to hand out little gifts in their mailbox. So this one was a Hershey bar that I printed and wrapped that said, thank you for being so awesome. This one was Swedish Fish that says, you're officially the best teachers and staff. And then this was a welcome back to school we did this year that sort of gave them an eraser, pen, a notebook, all these things. And like, why, why would I give each one of them that? And I, when I look at all, when I think about this, these are things that I enjoy doing. They bring a smile to people's faces. And sometimes the quiet stuff that's put in a mailbox that people, or teachers think they're, they're not noticed, they are noticed. And I want them to always feel like, I understand the things that you do, all the hard work that you do. And like, even whether it's a candy bar or whether it's a trail mix, or whether it's just a note that says, thank you. It's something that also helps build the community and builds the morale in the school building. The last one of our strategic plan. This one, drawing a blank on what number four was, so I'm gonna cheat and go back. UDL. I should have remembered that. We're like living in the world right now. So this one spoke to, and it spoke to two different strategic objectives. And so for UDL, the first thing that we had to do is we had to identify a teacher lead and then attend monthly meetings, nine to 11:00 in the morning, once a month, to meet with Dr. Katie Novak and go over like, what is, what is UDL? How can you use it in your, in your school? So our first team was created of 11 people that I was able to work through different ways of getting most of them in and around the table from nine to 11:00. Sometimes I had to trade one out for another one to come in because of the way that I could do coverage. But I made sure to get everyone who wanted to be part of that initial team, part of the process. We attended those monthly meetings in my office, using the big screen up on the wall. And then we, myself, Melissa, and our teach the, our teach the teacher or the lead for the program, which is Nancy Bucy. We attended the UDL book clubs, inclusive practice PLC. And then all of us completed a graduate course offered through Katie Novak on UDL to make sure that we were all on the same page. And now we are taking that and we're building that, what we've learned into our staff meetings. So we're building in visuals and audio to provide engagement with staff members, not only with students. Removing barriers for adult learning because adult learning has barriers just as much as students have barriers with their learning. One of the big things about UDL is talking about barriers. So it's not differentiation, as a lot of people think that differentiation in UDL is the same. They are different where differentiation is, you're thinking about, how am I gonna fix this for this student? How am I gonna fix this for this student? How am I gonna fix this for this student in order to meet the curriculum? Where UDL is saying, how do I get rid of the, all the barriers possible so every student can get to what they need right away? Instead of sort of piecemealing for some, it's, it's thinking about the big picture and breaking those barriers down. And then, as I said, I collaborated with Train the Train and Teacher Lead when building, when planning, building PD. Our plan then was to think about, what are we gonna do for this school year coming up? And we're working with the Inclusive Academy liaison, Lori Kazna, in order to do some walkthroughs and work in grade levels to develop lesson plans, lesson plan building into our planning process. So Lori has already come once. She's done a walkthrough, sort of seen where she's seeing UDL in the building. Where do we need to raise it a little bit? Are we at the beginning stages or are we a little bit further along? And then just this past Wednesday, we were able to get, again, sub-coverage. And then each team came in with a lesson plan that they wanted to look at and say, how could we UDL this lesson plan? Or we have questions about UDL and as a team, can you just talk to us about these questions? And so it was a place for Lori to be able to talk with us or talk through each grade level of what their concerns were, what their, their level of understanding of UDL was to make it applicable to them. So our last continuation of the Inclusion Academy, year one, we met with Dr. Katie Novak monthly. Year two, we're meeting with Dr. Lori Kazna as coaching support. But then myself and the teacher lead, Nancy Bucy, is continuing to do the monthly meetings with Dr. Novak from nine to 11:00 once a month to sort of build our next steps of what does that look like for UDL in our, in our school? So that's why those are still in progress. On one of our faculty meetings, we broke down the three areas of UDL. And then we had the teachers count off and said, what do you know? And what do you want to learn about? And so they sort of talked about what they know. And then they got to dive into all the different pieces of UDL. And then we did a gallery walk. So this is just a piece of that gallery walk for UDL. And then lastly, I mean, who's not gonna promote this? The Department of Education announced Plymouth River as a school of recognition, something we are extremely proud about. A lot of people say to me, congratulations on the great work that you did. I really have to say, for me, it's like, I take 5% of that. I give 45% to the teachers who are putting in the work for the, for the students. And 50% of it goes to the students who can sit in front of a computer, rigorously take that test, go over it again. There are times when the students are like, I took the test three times before I submitted it. And it's really, it's on the teachers and on the students, on how hard that they work and how committed they are to that test that we got to where we are. I know that I'm the person that drives the ship, but it's really, for me, it's about the students who did, who did the work for that. So here are ways that you can reach me and do you have any questions?
Thank you so much. This is amazing.
A lot of detail.
It's exciting. And I especially love the PAL program, the community building. It's, it's really thoughtful and, you know, I think especially since it's November and it's Giving Month, it's a great idea. Good practice to put in place for maybe our committee members. Anyway, does anybody have any questions?
No.
Yeah.
On the first goal of the MTSS, the multi-tiered system of supports.
Yep.
Have you found, because we get this question a lot because we talk about it as kind of catching people up or finding, you know, areas to address. Have you found that it's been beneficial for students who may be ready for a little more and are looking for enrichment? Has it been helpful for them too?
Yeah, so the way, so the way that I described it as flexibly grouping is then it allows those students that when we're grouping the students, we may have some of those kids who are on or above grade level, that we could put them in one group and accelerate them, but not in a way of like, oh, we're gonna, if we're in third grade, we're doing fourth grade material. We're gonna dive deeper into some of the stuff that we're doing in third grade. So it's also helping accelerate those students.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I think what we did last time was to approve the update on...
Yes. Like a motion to approve the update of the Plymouth River Elementary School Improvement Plan.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. I miss that community. Okay, so actually, before we move on, do we have any questions or comments from the community? Okay, no. Okay, moving on to 9.2. To present an update on the South Elementary School Improvement Plan and act as appropriate. Hello, how are you?
Great, thank you.
We're never letting you go, Mary.
I know. I don't want to go. Comes a certain time. So I just want to thank Greg, that was a great presentation. And I got so many ideas, I'm thinking, oh, can I put these in by June?
Yeah, I'm also going, you're leaving me and then I become the senior.
That's true. I'm only a phone call away, but you did a great job and I got a lot of ideas from that. And I want to start off by, I think we all know Lori Jacobs. And she's been my assistant principal for 11 years now. It's gonna happen again. And she's such a big help to me and especially makes me unscared of technology. So I'm grateful for that. And tonight we also have Eugene Bezinski, who's our teacher leader. And I really appreciate the support and the support of a lot of staff members today who wish us good luck and know that, that, you know, they love to hear us talk about South School, just like we love hearing you talk about Plymouth River School. It's so great. I'll never bore with school things. It's so great to hear about different schools. Our philosophy has always been, and we continue to stay true to that, to prepare the child for the path, not the path for the child. But we involve the whole village and of course, respect the learning style of every single child. And you'll see, I think that's the first day, if I'm not mistaken, going right out on the path there. It's not working. Oh, it's not working? Okay, sorry about that. Would you mind going to the next slide? Thank you. It's not going forward at all. There we go. And obviously, an extra special thank you to all the people listed here, the school committee, the Hingham Public Schools Administration, everybody's working so hard. The South School staff, the students and families, and the South School PTO, as well as the South School Council members. And these are the school council members, myself, Eugene Bezinski, Vanessa Brier, community representative is Karen Johnson. And we have two new parent representatives this year, Gwen Hughes and Victoria Smythe. And our school committee liaison is Jen Benham. And tonight, I'm just gonna do similarly to what Greg did. So I thank him for laying the ground. We're just gonna talk about planned progress that we're kind of gonna do in two segments that we made in '22 to '23. And obviously, this is the second year of the plan, but we do have some updates and some ongoing themes, and you know us, new tourists. Okay, so a huge thing that we believe is that seeing is believing and a picture is worth a thousand words. So you will see that this follows through with a very special picture at the end. This is a picture from last year because we're talking about '22 to '23. So you might recognize some current sixth graders. So obviously, we have a lot of the same goals. So Greg did a lot of the groundwork. Encouraging academic excellence is so important to the district's strategic plan and also to our plan. And it's obviously some of the most important work that we do. And I am so thrilled to tell you, I know Greg told you a lot about it, that MTSS and HTSS has been perfected in both math and literacy. I want to thank all the people, and there's a slide later that does that, who've been involved in this journey. And it started many, many years ago, but really in earnest in 2016. And there were many, many meetings. I think some of you were there in those meetings and you know what I'm talking about. And I love to see that it's come to fruition in all the schools. And the comprehensive schedule that Greg put a lot of work into, that beautiful thing he showed you, I always call it Greg's Lego schedule, that we all use. It made it so that we can include the interventionist time, as he described. This past year, we had many meetings to further perfect the schedule. So I always said in the very beginning, we decided, we're gonna bake a cake. And then we just baked the best cake we could. And every year, I feel like we make it better and better and better. So this past year, we had many meetings during that year, and I'll talk about that in a minute, what we've done now to even further perfect the MTSS and the HTSS. This is, this past year was our second, '22 to '23, was our second year of two full-time interventionists in each area, which to me was like, I got the best present ever to both of us. We got the best present ever because it meant that we had enough people now to do, to help us do the work. Where before, we had the dream, but we didn't have enough people. So that's been absolutely amazing. Greg also mentioned that all hands on deck. And of course, teamwork makes the dream work. Everyone gets together and decides on that. We also continue our reading incentive and a math Olympics program, kind of add to that. So yes, we get together, we go over the assessment, we flexibly group, we do all the wonderful things. And I know they're done across town. And all hands on deck, very, very important. Our IST team, instructional support team, has many staff members involved. We also have PLCs, professional collaboration PLC teams. As you may or may not know, all our teaching teams are very tight teams and they meet a lot, many, many times. And that continued through last year. And then this year, we have a new surprise to add to that. Really, the sail on our ship is the whole idea of UDL, the differentiated instruction, as well as the learning styles awareness. And thinking about that big picture before you plan curriculum and you deliver curriculum. So as Greg said, you can remove the barriers. And obviously, continued, continued training of staff in many of those areas listed there is so important. And I thank Dr. Adams and Katie Roberts for doing a great job with that and professional development. There are so many offerings to help to train staff. So this year, as you know, we also are a Massachusetts School of Recognition and we're extremely proud of that. And as I know Greg is. And we met 100% of our targets and were deemed to be, have performed better than 99% of the other schools in the state. So Lori and I got very excited and, you know, it was a last-minute kind of thing. So we, we decided that day, and we happen to have this at our fingertips, we ordered that cake. And we also went around and told everybody, next slide please, that we felt so lucky to have this staff. And you can do next slide please. And we felt like the luckiest duckies to have the best staff in the world. And we're so grateful for all of their efforts because they're really the ones, the staff and the students and the families, who did all the work. And it was just such an exciting day because it was gonna be released at noon. So we were kind of, that morning, we said, oh my gosh, we have to do something phenomenal. And you may or may not know that Lori Jacobs absolutely loves ducks. So she happened to have all those ducks in her office. And we were able to go around and give everybody a duck. And we brought you one tonight too. And tell everybody that we're the luckiest ducks on the face of the earth. Because really and truly, it's the people that come to work every day and work so hard and care so much about the students. And just the team, the whole teamwork makes the dream work mantra. We live it every single day. I refer to this whole part of my life as my Camelot. And I don't know, am I, am I the oldest person in the room? Does everyone know what I'm talking about when I mention Camelot? So we always feel every day like lucky ducks and like we live in Camelot. And we'd love to have the next slide. And honestly, I mentioned it earlier, but the support from those who worked so hard on the MTSS plan for years, from 2016 till now, and all the families who supported it. Because the cathedral got built, everything got put together. We had the MTSS, we had that cake, if you will, and it all got put together and it was great. And then it looked like we were gonna lose it all and the cake was gonna get smashed and it didn't happen. So we're so grateful to everybody. And it's really a teamwork makes the dream work effort. So now I'll take my hat off. All right, now, of course, we are so thrilled with the advancement in math and literacy, science, social studies, all of the subjects that we teach. I want to mention all the department heads, not just the two that are here. And it's, we are just so thrilled with how well the students have been doing, but ultimately, are they happy? And that's goal number two. It's so important to keep up the social emotional wellbeing and awareness of social responsibilities. And you may be familiar that we have a bee as a mascot, hence the reason I was dressed as one, at the, I'm lucky to own a bee costume. You know, it's just one of those things. And we do our buzz assemblies and we try to emphasize different tools, do different things. The other day, we... The other day, we had the veterans' assembly, in June, we thank the families who are leaving, we sing songs like You've Got a Friend in Me in October, and we have a beautiful song, Nothing More, which you may remember from last year, from the showcase, and that just kind of personifies the whole philosophy of our teamwork makes the dream work, and how caring about others is what's really important. The ultimate theme is be kinder than necessary, and today, we were very excited to celebrate National Kindness Day, so Lori came up with a whole thing for the whole week that we're doing this week, and we just constantly have themes like this, our bulletin boards, our chalkboards around the school, all have messages about these things, the teachers intertwined in morning meeting, the intertwined toolbox, we have a kindness library, we have a toolbox library, and the books are often read. It was really funny, because I walked into a second grade today, and we were giving out pins and stickers, and the teacher had just pulled out the What Does It Mean to Be Kind book. Before we got there, I said, talk about perfect timing, she didn't know we were coming. The toolbox program, which I know Greg spoke so beautifully about, is totally integrated, we now have the guidance counselor, thanks to that initiative, and she does do the lessons as well, and the teachers integrate them into their classrooms constantly. We do things like moving forward in June, the teachers will come visit, or the children will go visit first or second grade, or whatever, to kind of get rid of some of those fears moving forward, and we have buddy classes, K and 5, 2 and 4, 1 and 3, and they do all kinds of activities together. We do many, many activities at the grade levels, I know I have a lot of South School parents here, so they're familiar with them, we kind of cut our thing down this year, so we don't have a million slides with that, but you'll recall that we do have the Alpha Fest in kindergarten, we have the first grade musical, we have second grade poetry, we have third grade, we have a new thing called the hometown history performance, which I cannot believe how they put that together, it's so wonderful, they're all wonderful, but this was a new one. We have United States Fair in fourth grade, and we have a wonderful booth day demonstration in fifth grade, and so we're constantly bringing families in, you know, having the students show their learning, and I'm just mentioning a few, there are so many examples, it's all part of that UDL idea, that idea that, you know, learning styles, hands-on learning, kids need to be presenting, they need to be talking about what they're learning. I had a nice little conversation with a boy the other day, and he said he had Ontario for his project, and I said, well, I'm going to Ontario tonight, my sister happens to live in Ontario, and I went and visited her quickly over the weekend, and he was, he said, well, I don't know much about it, but by the end of the year, I hope to, so it's just, they know that they're gonna learn these things, and they also learn from each other. I have a South School student sitting right in front of me, so he probably remembers a lot of those things. So the buzz assemblies are very important, the children really look forward to them. Okay, we'll move on to the next thing. Mentioned the toolbox library, those are just some examples of titles. And there's a picture of our first buzz assembly of 23 to 24, I think we had 90 staff members get up on the stage and sing the, we got a friend, we get, we just want to be friends, and pretty much everybody, even one of the custodians learned the song on the guitar for us, so it was great. And you'll see Mrs. Manning, she's a fifth grade teacher, and those are the first Buzz Awards winners of this year. And again, as Greg extended the invitation, great idea, Greg, anytime you want to come, you are more than welcome. So our goals three and four are very similar to Plymouth River's, because they're also important, so academic learning, social, emotional learning, and then of course, making sure family and community are aware of these things, and to promote communication of awareness. The Samor newsletter, which Greg has helped me with quite a bit, has, you know, is something that we use, and we're very into our common language around South Schools, so anyone at South School can say eyes up, and all the kids know they're supposed to be quiet, and look up, and pay attention, so we work really hard at speaking the same language, and of course, toolbox tidbits constantly in the announcements, and that kind of thing, so they all know which tool we're on, and what we're doing, and it's constantly talked about, and you'll see someone in the hallway going like this, garbage can tool, garbage can tool, and we welcome, another thing we do is welcome new families with open arms, I'm fond of saying, there are no strangers here, only friends you have not yet met, and we have fast facts, which I believe all the elementary schools have, and new families reception and tour, we had just had a new student lunch a few weeks ago, constant communication. We have focus groups and survey data that we analyze, we just did a flag project last year, and I believe I talked about it last year, but we made sure that everyone feels like they belong, and in the interest of equity, we made sure that we have a flag from all of the representative countries that our families are from. We're just about to ask if there's, we're gonna send out the list next week and see if there's any that we're missing, so we make sure we add on to that every year, and if you haven't seen it, we do have a picture of it, it's, oh, is that back there in the buzz? Oh, if you could just go back to the buzz assembly, you can see, and the flags go all the way around the cafeteria, so it was very exciting when we added those flags, and we're grateful to the PTO for that, and we hope that it makes people feel welcome and belonging. Okay, so parent involvement is very robust, we have a phenomenal PTO, they've already done many events this year, PTO Social, we have the fun run on Saturday, we had a wonderful harvest party outside, which was a brilliant idea on somebody's part, and that worked out really well, and we always get many letters and emails from families that are so grateful for our wonderful year. So, goal five is all about safety around the school, and we have renewed staff training yearly, updating of understanding emergency folders and books, and we constantly use our surveillance equipment. I compliment especially Mrs. Graham and Mrs. Barry, who are in the office, and you know, they'll always say, oh, there's a bus down there, oh, there's somebody by the buses, so it's a wonderful addition, and I thank many people who made that happen. Okay, so 23 to 24, as you probably remember, we did Back to the Future 1, and then we did Back to the Future 2, when we brought back all our things. In school council, we keep a running list of all the wonderful events that we've brought back, and so this year, our theme is Up, Up and Away, you may be familiar with the movie Up, so we stole a little something from that. Next slide. So this year, we are definitely making that cake even better. As we said, we met last year, I'm so grateful, we have grade level, every grade level has liaison, and that liaison kind of takes care of communication for that team. And last year, we met probably at least four or five times, and Eugene is an important member of that team, is the specialist, and we feel like we baked an even better cake, and so therefore, fitting in, kind of like Greg already explained to you, the math HTSS, you know, you didn't want, you don't want to have that after you've had lunch, and special, and recess, and whatever, so fitting all that in, doing it in advance, a lot of compromises were made, and it was really interesting for us to sit there and hear people say, oh, I didn't think about the fact that in first grade, you want this, or in second grade, you'd want that, and talk about democracy, it was incredible to see them all work together and say, okay, well, I don't necessarily want this, but I realize that you need it, so I'll give you that for this, and it went really well. Congress could learn a lot from this group of liaisons that kind of came to this tweaking of the schedule, and made the even better cake. And another huge thing that we added this year, and I'm gonna give all the credit to Eugene, because he did so much work on this schedule, for an added PLC, our teams have always met in PLCs, two times in a cycle, but now what they're doing is they're meeting with the specialist, the reading, the math, and the writing specialists, and it's an extra time that they get to meet, and he did this wonderful schedule that's rotating, that's, seems to be working really well, and you know, it all goes back to those liaisons meeting and talking about it, and the democratic way, so it's awesome. We're trying to reinstate staff peer observations, we had those before COVID, it's always good to go watch other people. I personally, as a special ed teacher many years ago, went 13 different places every day, and I'm so glad I learned from all those people, so I think it's really important. Obviously, the PD is going really well, and we need to continue that, especially for into reading. One thing I didn't mention earlier, of course, we take time to analyze all assessment data, and in iReady, as well as MCAS and things like that, and one of the big things we want to continue is awareness of learning styles, and the UDL approach that emphasizes multiple means of engagement. I'm trying to, in every meeting, kind of do our major themes, and in the last meeting, we did do also one of the case studies, and we did the one about, Margaret, you'll be happy, we did the one about the accommodations, and you know, just thinking about if you're going on a field trip, are there accommodations for all those children, and just talking about all those things. And we also talked about why we love being on a team, so that's a big, big theme at South School, and just trying to leave, you know, little things that people can harken back to. And goal two, obviously, we're all about equity, and we continue to meet with the equity team, I mentioned already the flag project, the buddy, the buddy activities are going to continue, we have new songs coming up for the buzz assemblies. I will mention the other day, I don't think there was a dry eye in the house, when the kids sang Thankful For the USA to the veterans, I believe we had more than 30, maybe 35 veterans, and a lot have come year after year after year, so that was absolutely thrilling, and we have move forward activities planned again for June, because it works, kids love it. Obviously, toolbox is going to continue, and all of those lessons. The best thing that ever happened was that group got together and found toolbox, because there's so many social, emotional programs, and we do use different ones, but this is the one that's kind of like the umbrella over everything else, and you're right, Tim, it's really interesting to see, now that they've had it for four or five years, you know, how it's ingrained in them. And obviously, communication, very important, the family buzz, the toolbox tidbits, and specialists and nurses and counselors corners that get added to our Samor, are just some highlights. And goal four, thank you, again, we're going to extend the flag project, and we've gotten so much more parent involvement, I believe this year, they can't even, there's so many volunteers, it's absolutely phenomenal, and we're obviously going to offer parent workshops going forward as well, we're gonna continue those, and we are so lucky to have a wonderful Fly South program, again, our teacher leader runs that, and it's lots of little classes students can take. Do you want to name some of the classes? I know there's cupcakes, there's.
Coloring, we added a yoga class, we've been working hard to expand it to just have like every interest, we have Lego class, cooking classes, it's been, the growth has been really impressive. We, we have almost 200 students involved in the after-school program.
Right.
And instead of running it once a season, we run it twice a season, so kids.
It's really great, it's another great way for them to develop themselves socially and emotionally. And of course, homework carers is always a wonderful thing, and we also have box in the morning, so you know, it's kind of like, you know, if you can't find something you like, you know, there's just about everything, it's a wonderful menu, and of course, safety is very, very important, and we talked about all of those things earlier, we're gonna continue to further enhance our safety, and a big thing that Lori has spearheaded is a collaboration with transportation, where you invite in the bus, the bus drivers, they come into an assembly, so we're all there as a group, okay, students, you know, the whole staff is here, the bus drivers are here, everybody's important, and Lori wrote a wonderful bus pledge that all the students signed, so does everyone issue on the bus? She takes out her three-ring binder and says, you sign this, so you know, it can sometimes be difficult, you know, kids, they sometimes, you know, have issues on buses, but we really work hard at trying to have them understand what the behavior needs to be, and we want to keep everybody safe, so it's a huge part of our goal five. And we work, like I said, we work very hard to respect all learners and prepare them for the path, and we do believe it takes a village to prepare the child for the path, and we thank you all for being involved, there are so many people involved, it's so hard to even to begin to think about thanking all of them, and we have a very special picture here, talk about preparing for the path, so I don't know if you recognize this, but these are the seniors who came to visit last year, and they literally, those of you who were there, you know, said to us, we want to do the bees, we want to do, what are the bees? Be respectful, be responsible, be ready to learn, and be kinder than necessary, and that's been our theme for a long time, and to have, I was literally, you know, very crying, because these are seniors in high school, and they're coming back and saying, we remembered how we got prepared for the path. So you recall that we said a picture is worth a thousand words, and really and truly, I think we might have been able to show you that picture, and that would have been enough. And there's just one more. We are always thankful and grateful for everything that all of you do, and that everybody in the community does. So thank you all so much, and are there any questions?
Thank you very much, that was really nice, yeah, the social, emotional, and everything that you say, and everything you stand for, is just really warm and kind, and it's nice.
It's all of us.
Community building, and I love that we've got community schools, because you can really feel that community, and it's really appreciated. And the toolbox, I want to say, when this was rolling out, I guess five years ago, the parents got to sit in on a class to figure out, and to learn about what all the tools are, and we haven't had that in a while, so maybe you could nudge the kids to bring those tools back home to their parents, because I think it would be a nice refresher for some parents.
That's great, Jan, I do have a toolbox corner in my Samor every week, so they know which tool we're doing, and actually, Ness, you're giving me another great idea, we made a video our fir, the first full year of it, and it's, you remember it? I see people shaking their heads, of the students talking about the tools, so I think it's time to renew that, because I think those students are quite grown up now, so it might be time to redo that, and leave that as a piece of a legacy that people can look at, too.
That'd be great, and it's also a great reminder on the HTSS, I appreciate you mentioning the override and what that brought, and that we were able to finally staff the HTSS the way that we wanted.
Exactly, and there's so many people that deserve credit, I think back to the whole committee, started with, by Dr. LeBilwa, and then going forward, being supported by Dr. Austin, and then obviously, Dr. Maestis, and thank goodness, Dr. Adams was, also came on board, and just, you know, wanted to keep that so badly, and I'll be honest with you, going back even to my days of special ed, in my brain, I, you know, not that I formulated it in my brain, because they all did an amazing job, but I remember thinking, if only I had more people who could help me with this, we could make this, and I feel like it's there. So you know what they say, you have it right, and then you retire.
You've done your.
Not that I have it right, but you know, you have the system around you, right, and everything that you need, so I do hope it continues, and I just think it's amazing just to watch the students in their little groups in the classroom, and the amount of attention they can get, and it just brings everybody to their highest potential, so I thank everybody. Does anybody else have any questions?
No, I just want to say that you're lucky, you have a former South School student over there, I won't put Tony on the spot, but I know, I could see he wanted to recite, you know, the bees with you.
Thank you.
They all remember.
Thank you.
Greg, you didn't bring any gifts, did you?
I know.
Tell me why I had to give it.
He's gonna send you.
It's in your mailbox. I was just confused about that for a second, it's okay, though.
Thank you, that makes my.
Although Greg, your gift of the power code schedule, it reminds me of my, that is my schedule, I have a color for each person in my house, and it looks exactly like that.
And it's great, it keeps me alive, that's exactly, I'm so grateful for that.
Thank you.
Yes, I will make a motion to approve the update for the South Elementary School Improvement Plan for school year 24.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I failed again. Any community members who have questions or comments? If you can raise your hand, or, yeah, okay, I will get, hang on, so I will, I'll do better. All right, nine point three, to receive an update on the beginning of the year assessments. I assume this is Katie Roberts.
While Katie's connecting, Jess, this is our commitment again to providing, you remember, we discussed earlier in the year, MCAS data, this is our beginning of year math and literacy data, sort of where we are at this point, we have a commitment to come back in the winter and the spring, again, to share the update of our students' progress, it's just great connection to Greg's and Mary's presentations. Part of MTSS is looking, having teachers look at data, use the data to inform their instruction, to make groupings, and make plans to meet individual students' needs, both students who might be struggling, and students who might need support in moving forward in the curriculum, or going deeper into the curriculum, so on both sides of the spectrum. So we're grateful to all the educators and their, not only in helping to administer those assessments, but also in the analysis of the assessment. We often talk about the balance of how much time is being used for the assessment, but the remembering that the impact of all of that assessment really drives the development of individual plans to meet students' needs, so I think it's a really important part of, it's the base of our MTSS. So I'll pass it off to Katie to get us started.
Great.
In looking at the data.
Great, well, as Dr. Adams said, Greg LeMoss and Mary Eastwood's presentation tonight were the perfect segue to this, and hopefully, you will be hearing themes that we all have our oars in the water together, pulling together in the interest of students, so thanks, Sherry. There we are. So the school committee at this point can now recite this slide by heart, so this is the slide that kicks off each of our data present. So this is the slide that kicks off each of our data presentations. And so just to remind everybody, the acronym MTSS, looks like alphabet soup, but it does stand for Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. And a multi-tiered system of support is the systems, the structures and staffing that we employ in the interest of our students to help optimize our data-driven decision-making, progress monitoring and evidence-based supports and strategies. And just a reminder that this year is the second full year of a full implementation of our newly refined MTSS system. And so this year, as Greg and Mary both said, we'll be continuing to refine how we are employing the terrific resources that the community has afforded us with the wonderful staffing that we have, the revisions to things like our schedule that will help us to further employ those resources and continuing to employ all of our instructional strategies in the interest of students. This year, to date, we have already offered some additional professional development that will help us further the MTSS. We offered some additional training in the iReady My Path, which is that personalized learning tool that is used to continue to support students. We are working actively on our district-wide adoption of the new Evidence-Based Reading Program, Intereading, which complements this work of MTSS. And we are continuing the work begun last year around elementary math coaching cycles. Again, supporting the math workshop model and math practices. And so just wanted to dive into a little bit, again, our presentations often can feel like alphabet soup. And just want to make sure that we're really defining all of the tools that we're using and what all the acronyms mean. So this evening, we're going to be presenting our beginning-of-year data for two different kinds of assessments. The first assessment that we'll be presenting on will be presented by Mary Andrews. And that is our Acadia's Reading Diagnostic, which is also known as DIBELS Next. It was formerly known as DIBELS. And that is a universal early literacy screening tool that uses a series of short fluency-based probes. And it is supplemented with some additional subtests that we do. And Mary Andrews will dig a bit deeper into this early literacy screening tool, Acadia's. We also will be presenting our annual iReady Data Presentation, which includes both reading and math. And so the grade levels targeted by these tools, Acadia's, again, is an early literacy screener targeting grades K to 3. iReady Reading Diagnostic is geared towards 3 to 5, so there's some overlap in that grade 3. And our iReady Math Diagnostic is used in K to 6. And so how does this data here inform intervention? So the beginning-of-year data is actually some of the most important and actionable data that we have. As Greg and Mary both mentioned, the data is used to create the flexible instructional groups that will give students what they need. And that need could be the need for remediation and intervention. Or it could be the need for additional acceleration and enrichment and extension. The MTSS data is used to assign students with the resources that they need to be successful and to extend their learning. Within the MTSS structure, we refer to tiers. So Tier 1 is the research-based core instruction that every student receives. So every student is a general education student and every student will receive that Tier 1 instruction. Beyond that, we're again employing the resources that we have in our MTSS structure to provide additional interventions to students as we identify their needs by the data. Tier 2 is some targeted intervention in small groups based on that MTSS data. And again, as Greg and Mary mentioned, we use the data to create instructional groups with students that have similar needs. And we match them with different personnel, whether that be a classroom teacher taking a group, our reading specialist, math specialist, interventionist, working with students who have similar needs. Beyond Tier 2, if students have need of more intensive and increasingly individualized interventions, we have additionally Tier 3 interventions. These are most often facilitated by our reading or math specialists. However, students with domain-specific IEP goals might be receiving Tier 3 services as determined by their IEP. Thanks, Sheri. Okay, so this evening, Mary Andrews will kick us off with both the early literacy data presentation and also our iReady reading presentation.
Dave, I think we need to borrow the Lucky Ducky hats to make this a little more exciting. You set us up, Mary E. Mary E., I'm Mary A. Who am I? Okay, so I think we'll start off with a little preview and then we'll get into the charts that prove that I didn't make up these numbers. So when we're talking about K2, Acadia's, formerly known as DIBELS Next, we're, we also do grade 3 DIBELS. They sort of get a double dip of the Acadia's and the iReady. But for presentation purposes, we suss things out this way. You will see that 78% of our kindergarten students, 71% of grade 1 and 83% of grade 2 students come in at or above grade level when we're looking at the beginning-of-year reading composite score. We will, you'll also see that both K and 1, that trajectory from pre-COVID till now, we're making some nice growth, just a few percentage points away from our pre-pandemic highs. And that at grade 2, we're now tied with a pre-pandemic, pre-pandemic high of 83%. You'll also see when we start to talk about the subtests that for grade 1, there are only two subtests and grade K, we'll talk about that. But we're looking at nonsense word fluency, our correct letter sounds as sort of target area for growth. And our oral reading fluency, words correct are our target area for grade 2. Okay, so I guess I can't make this go. Is that right? Okay, okay. So here's just proof of concept. You'll notice we're 3% points higher than the COVID fall. When we look at our blue and green together, that's our additive belt benchmark. And our yellow and red of below and well below. And that we're gaining on our pre-pandemic percentage of fall 2020, 81% for grade 1. We see some steady growth for the last four years and are almost back to our pre-pandemic high of 73% at 71 right now. And then grade 2, you'll see that we're tied for our highest historical average of 83%. That 92% outlier, that was our pre-all-hands-on-deck ability to assess all the children all the time because we didn't have full teams in place. So one of our schools couldn't administer all the subtests. And without administering all the subtests, you can't get a composite score. So that's why that is a little bit of an outlier. Next, they also included in your packets the just breakdown of what each subtest is and how those, you know, and even like subtests within the subtest and what they look at. And so you can move to the next screen to Sheri. So when we go through these next slides, this is what that's referring to. We can see from kindergarten, our first sound fluency subtest, that the composite score that we originally talked about those numbers, they're also calculated with the letter naming fluency subtest that it's administered also, but it doesn't have a benchmark. So it's a score that's manually entered into the database and then the composite score is calculated. So that's why you only see one subtest rainbow, but there are actually two considered in the composite score for kindergartners. We'll look at the three that are calculated into the grade 1 scores. And that's the phoneme seg, nonsense word fluency, correct letter sounds and nonsense word fluency, whole world, whole the words read. I don't have fluency right now. And then if we start to look at grade 2, we have five subtests incorporated on that composite score. Again, the two nonsense word fluency components and the three. Now we're moving into the oral reading fluency as well. And we look at words correct accuracy and the retell in our target area for really examining where we want to look for growth is that words correct piece in the retell. As we move toward grade 3 through 5 and look at our iReady scores, you will see that when we look at the students as a whole, 85% of our third graders, 96% of our fourth graders and 87% of our fifth graders are ready to access grade-level curriculum. And we'll talk about what that means when we see the actual graphs. In all three of those whole student, all the people, groups, the comprehension of informational texts continues to be the area in need of the most remediation. You'll see it's not by much in most of, in a number of the grades. And then when we look at students with disabilities and their ability to or readiness for accessing grade-level curriculum, we see 57% at grade 3, 86% at grade 4 and 54% at grade 5. And we see those categories for target areas for growth not surprisingly broadened to include literature and both literature and informational texts at all three grade levels, but also phonics for grade 3 and vocab at 4 and 5. So you'll also see from the graphs that we're taking as a good sign that our foundational skill interventions is working as that phonics deficit is largely remediated over the course of their time with us in elementary schools. This is just looking at comp data from last year's VOY scores to this year. And so this is a slide worth mentioning, excuse me, that for iReady, their own explication of how their data works is that for the beginning-of-year scores, both green and yellow mean that the student is ready for on-grade-level work, to access that curriculum. And the reason for that is, right, if you're assessed at the beginning of the year and you left as a third grader and you haven't learned any fourth grade material yet, it's okay that, you know, you're testing in the yellow and you're ready to start that new grades journey. I think it's also worth mentioning, to get back, I think it was Carrie that you had asked before, questions that you get a lot. I think that the high numbers of greens that we have indicate that TRI model is working, where we're able to meet a lot of students, where, all the students where they are and move them along from wherever they're beginning to wherever they need to go. And if that's below or at or above grade level. Okay, if we look at, what do we have next here? Students with disabilities, grade 3 through 5. I think this slide is a really interesting one to look at. And I spoke about this a little bit when we looked at MCAS data that I was really hoping for my colorful pointer here, but imagine if you will. We, if, just on the surface, I look at grade 3 and I say, "Oh, gosh." You know, last year, 23% of students with disabilities were in the red. And now this year, 43% are what's happening. And then I say, "Well, okay, let's wait one second." And I'm going to look at that same cohort. And they were, that grade 3 group last year that was 23%, they're our grade 4 students this year and they're down to 13%, right? So when we try, trace a cohort, especially when we're looking at subgroups, that really matters. And I think the other thing worth pointing out is when we're looking at subgroups, we, this is all very helpful information. But when we're looking for our own purposes and looking with special educators and reading teams, we have to go much deeper than this because we also don't know from this general poll from iReady is if the students are students with reading goals on their IEPs or math goals on their IEPs or executive functioning goals on their IEPs. It's all just grouped together here. So the other thing that becomes important, if you look at the difference between, in the N, from last year's grade 3 had 74 students with disabilities included in the N. This year's grade 3 has 44. So that percentage jump looks really huge. It's a difference of three students in the red, 16 last year and 19 this year. So it's just, that could be the number that would jump out at you the most. Where actually I'm looking more at the grade 5 numbers, grade 4, you know, passes the sniff test on a number of levels here. Grade 5, I have a drop from last year's group to this year's group of grade 5. And is relatively steady, 50 to 57. But my cohort also dropped because if you, we look at my 35% in the red to 46% in the red, but I'm looking at the same group from grade 4 at the beginning of the year, last year to this year, grade 5. And if we start triangulating data and we look at the grade 4 MCAS scores, when we talked about that a month ago, grade 4 last spring was, you know, one of our areas that dipped. So that makes us look at that cohort and that data in a different and more sort of targeted way. Then it's not the same as what we're seeing at 3. That makes sense. The next slides, we can just show the general domain comparison that we talked about in the preview as far as who's falling where. And again, I think the large green bands are good indicators of how we're able to move those students on or above grade level and keep them moving on. And then also intervene where we need to with, in yellow and red. And we can sort of breeze through here. It just bears out what I talked about of the informational text being our area for growth in all students, grade 3, 4, 5. And then how that looks a little bit different. Sheri, if you don't mind talking through, with students with disabilities, we set phonics piece with grade 3 for sure. And then as we go through all of grade 4 domains. Next one, thank you. We see just by a bit the informational text over vocab, but phonics certainly shrinking as we would expect. By the time, if you're still having significant issues with phonics by grade 4 or 5, you've been most likely picked up, you know, for special education with some sort of language learning disability. And grade 4, we see that, 2. And then we see, you know, vocab introduced as something that isn't surprising as an area of need. And then grade 5, whole group looks similar. Phonics band is really tight and small. And not even any yellow anymore. If you still have trouble there, you have trouble, trouble. And then the students with disabilities, how that plays out very similar to the grade 4. Students with disabilities needs. I think, yeah, I think that that is, it's funny to do the takeaways at the end and then you're at the end like, "Wait, what did we talk about now?" I guess we talk about questions, if you have any.
Does anybody have any questions? Does anybody in the community have any questions? Sheri, if you can let me know if there's anybody that raises their hand. I'm sorry. Matt, okay, great. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Matt.
We're good. Thanks. Okay.
I am hopefully going to bring the gift as well of brevity. As Mary kind of noted and we've talked about, it's the beginning-of-year data. So not a ton of things to glean. So we'll try to kind of move quickly through some of the data. So in general, in grades K through 5, and again, I've sussed it out in smaller bullets that I know you've all kind of seen already. But in K through 5 in general, about 92% of all students and 78% of special ed students are ready for grade-level work to start the school year. And then in reviewing the domain strengths and weaknesses, the profiles for both the special ed subgroup and for all of our students, the same patterns really kind of showed for both groups, which is good. Nothing was really jumping out in particular, except for grade 3 students with disabilities. We'll look at that a little bit later when we get to slide 42. And then if we talk about grades 6 through 8 on the next slide. So for grade 6, again, 93% of all of our students and 72% of our grade 6 students were, students with disabilities were ready for grade-level work. We do not do iReady in our accelerated courses, the Algebra 1 and Pre-Algebra courses. But the other students in our Math 7 and Math 8 courses, along with our C-grade special education courses as well, used iReady to start the year. And 85% of our students in grade 7, including 74% of students with disabilities, again, ready for grade-level work. And in grade 8, 66% of all the students, including 54% of the students with disabilities, again, ready for grade-level work from those cohorts. And then the geometry domain is the one that sort of jumped out from that data in particular. And we can look at those slides as we get a little further down. Here, I think the interesting note was the clear jump, which you actually can't see on the bottom. Grade 2 is 9% last year. Sorry, we're actually jumping to the next slide, Sheri. I was also anticipating the clicker. So for here, for our students with disabilities, when we're looking at grade 2, this is the stark difference. Last year, we were at 30% and we jumped up to 42%. So again, beginning-of-year data, we don't know specifically what that is now, but we're able to kind of dig in at the individual level. But again, having this data from the start of the year, and you guys heard me during the MCAS presentation, I was super excited to say, "We've already started interventions." At second week of school, we were already working on things. working on things. That's some of the true value of being able to have this type of data right off the start. And we can really kind of get in and dig in with kids right away. So we see this on this slide. On the next slide, when we look at grades three through five, again, we see, sorry, Sherri, one more slide. We see students with disabilities in grade three went up from 20% to 43% last year. So again, similar to what we see in grade two, something that we are alert to early on in the year and can intervene early on in the year. But the nice thing, and Mary kind of just alluded to this as well, we see from grade three to grade four, the red dropped 11% and the green went up 11%, which is fantastic. And same from grade four to grade five, the red stayed the same, but our green placement for our students with disabilities increased from last year to this year. So again, beginning of the year, we don't truly, truly know what that means, but what we'll know over time. We hope, you know, you hope to see that with a cohort over time, that maybe some of that intervention, that's proof that the intervention's ticking. Again, it's year two, so we can't make that full claim, but that's what we would hope that that will be and what we will see over time. If we go to the next slide here in grade six, again, it's sort of important to remember that when we get to seventh and eighth grade, those students are doing an accelerated sequence where they're doing more than one years of math in one year. So we're not, we're sort of offering that sort of acceleration that they'd get through almost, I'm using in my PATH program, through their curriculum as is. But if we had included those students sort of in the numbers, we can consider that grade seven would have 93% of students ready for on-grade level work, and grade eight would have 87% of students ready. And so when you look at the charts here, it looks wildly different, but when you kind of fill out that cohort, you see that those cohorts are similar in the numbers to the other grade levels, which I think is sort of important to look, to consider when the actual visual itself looks a little bit different. And then when talking about cohorts, again, if we look at grade eight last year, which would be on the bottom, you know, we noted 85% of students were two or grade levels below to start the year last year. So wildly different number this year to start off this year. It'll be interesting to see, we talked about that clearly with the MCAS report a month or so ago. It'll be interesting to see how that plays out. And again, something we'll watch over time and see, you know, always interesting though, gives us a lot of data about cohorts and gives us a lot of opportunity to intervene with kids as needed. From here, if we could jump to slide 42, which would be grade three, students with disabilities. And so this was one of the domains that was the only K through five domain that was a little bit different for students with disabilities versus all students. And in particular, we see that numbers and operations and algebraic thinking is actually jumping out ahead of measurement in geometry, which is kind of counter to what we see everywhere else. So right away, this gave us a little bit of data to kind of dig in and look. And then with being able to start interventions right away, to start off the year, it gives us a little bit of extra time to focus in and kind of see what's going on with individual students. The other thing to consider, again, the MyPATH tool specifically focuses on number and operations and algebraic thinking first. And so students who need more work there will actually have those addressed before they move on to measurement data and geometry. So that was one thing from the domain analysis that sort of jumped out. And then the other thing, and again, very early in the year, we'll have to see how things develop. But if we could jump to slide 47, which would be grade six all. So if we see our geometry domain, sort of where we expect it for grade six, and then two more slides to grade seven, all, we can see that geometry domain is kind of pushing a little bit further on. And then to grade eight, again, geometry domain is pushed further out. Again, and in general, this makes sense. You know, we always try to appropriately address numbers and operations and algebraic thinking first. Those are the real, true, enduring standards that kids need day in and day out. All the geometry standards that are taught in middle school are also revisited and taught in, in full again in the high school geometry class. And students have a lot of opportunity to relearn those again. But something that jumped out to me, and something that's worth at least looking at and seeing that's a trend over time and seeing what happens again. Early beginning of the year data, but those are some of the things that are worth noting and worth keeping an eye on. Questions from anybody?
We did talk a little bit in the, our educational program and subcommittee about this data. We were wondering how much of this is a story of summer slide, looking at comparing the fall data to the spring data. That's one of the points that we were.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it can be.
Yeah.
The research is pretty strong that the slide math is much more significant than in reading. Just, kids don't just have the ran, as many opportunities to engage in math while many are either being read to or reading over the summer. So it is something that is more significant. And so in the winter data, we'll be able to see, you know, how much we've been able to pick up that, that summer slide as kids just revisit concepts that they knew, but just didn't know at the beginning of the year.
Very true. And I think any classroom teacher would probably tell you, a month, month and a half into school, it's a highly different student than those first couple of weeks.
Okay, does anybody out in the community have any questions on the math section? Raise your hand. Nope, okay.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So 9.4 is to receive an update on student services. Unfortunately, we have to table this for this meeting.
Yes. Due to illness, Dr. Cataldo will be here next meeting. So she apologizes for not making it tonight, but she'll be here on the 27th.
9.5 to review the fee for esports program at Hingham High School and act as appropriate. I think we have Jim question for a couple of different sections now.
Good evening.
Hi.
Dr. Cataldo has speedy recovery, but I'm glad to be up. So you have in your packet a proposal for a fee as required for esports to become an offering at the high school. Esports, the goal, our goal with esports is not necessarily to attract students or student athletes away from other activities, but more to create an opportunity for students to find a connection within the school community, doing things that they might otherwise be doing outside of the school community, and bringing them into that, again, to that connection in, in the, in the school environment and adult advisor. And, and the way that Playverse, the company that the Massachusetts Schools Athletic Administrators Association has partnered with, works is it create, it has that team component and the qualities that team play helps promote in young people. So when we calculated several years ago how we would charge for unified athletics, we looked at less days per week meeting, and that is how esports would, would work. And we went with a half fee. But the half fee also falls under the guideline of one fee. So if you do pay one athletic fee, you wouldn't pay an additional 187, fall under the, under the current athletic fee.
Any questions?
Carrie, just to, I think this is great. We, we have a family friend who is a student at Hingham High who's really into this. And I learned from that family that this could also make you more eligible for scholarships in college, I believe that.
I did leave that off of the memo, but there, there is some surprising numbers if you go to the MS website.
Yeah.
There are some surprising numbers on scholarship dollars that are being awarded to students. Real, it's real dollars.
Yeah, exactly. I know. I think it's great. So will this fee cover the cost of the program?
No, there is still some work to do to cover the cost, grant, grant work, fundraising that we might do. I needed to get this to you as we would be looking at potentially starting in February. So I wanted to get the approval for the fee so we could start organizing.
I think I'm being a little slow tonight and tries trying to figure out the money. If somebody did a traditional sport in the fall and then did an esports over the winter.
They'd pay one time.
They'd pay one time.
Correct.
Okay. So the 187 is really for people who are doing esports and not doing any other sports?
That's correct.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Sorry, do you have a sense of the overall cost, or is that going to depend on participa, I mean, I assume it depends on participation, but do you have a sense of what?
I, I have a sense, but there are some variables that we still need to figure out in terms of how we will pay the advisor and what that will look like. So there, there's a range there. Roughly $3,500 to work with Playverse, with the numbers that we have.
Okay. I think your intent is to seek out some grant funding to cover some of the costs, any fees associated with participation.
Correct.
There's a fee for participating in the.
With Playverse, right, right.
Yeah. And then using some of the intramural funding to support the costs. So sorry, just to be clear. So you think 3,500 sort of total program cost?
3,500, not including the coach or any travel.
Not including coach or travel, okay.
Optional, optional. Most of it will be able to happen within the school.
Okay.
But there, there are some options for workshops and other collaborative activities that are pretty exciting.
Got it.
So do, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So do we know that once you add in the proposed fee, does that net the other costs of the 3,500 and then I guess it would be a stipend for?
For the faculty.
For the faculty.
I'm not quite sure I'm following your question.
So the money that you're bringing in for charging the 187 per student, is that what I'm guessing?
So that's because of the one fee per participation, it's a tough number to, until we actually have the students that we know, you know, what their intentions are to really be able to forecast what the number will be, the revenue generated would be from participation fees.
General sense from other communities, how many kids typically participate in the esports versus not at all? Like, so we can try to guesstimate, you know, if we were to say 20% of our kids don't participate in athletics at all, if we knew that half of them are going to participate in esports, we could come up with a guesstimate that way.
It, it's interesting with, within our league and with athletic directors that I typically speak with, that this is not very common right now. We did survey last year, and 19 students said that they would be interested, and another 11 said that they would be interested in additional information.
It's not common in Massachusetts, right? It's common, it's more common in other areas, is my understanding.
I don't want to say it's not common in Massachusetts. I just don't feel like it's grabbed hold out this way yet. I, I have not studied it to be able to really answer your question outside of Massachusetts.
Summer will just started it up, I think last year. It was their first year of doing esports. It's been successful, but they're also a much bigger district.
Right.
Is Playverse, they'll supply all the equipment, or will there be any costs on equipment we'll need to purchase?
No, we would access their, their websites. And, and that's the way that this particular company uses or administers esports. We would use our equipment in-house.
And could there potentially be a booster group to go with this team?
There always seems to be.
Alex or Tony, do you have any thoughts on it?
Me personally, I know, I know a few people who have shown interest. Overall, like, I have a lot of friends who are, like, would be occupied that already do, you know, I have a lot of friends who do three, three sports already. But I do know a few people who have shown interest in this esports team. And I think some of them, yeah, could definitely benefit from that.
Thank you. Thank you. I guess, Dr. Adams, what's in the intramural, intramural budget?
I don't know offhand, but we did discuss that. And I think we'd like to give it a shot and go with the students' interest and, and see how far we could get. I think there is some funding available in the intramural to be able to cover a start, as well as seeking out some grant funding.
Okay. Jacqueline, you?
I will be having that conversation. I, we did talk in the past about this, and I'm not anticipating interest, but I absolutely will. Does our IT have the infrastructure to support our team?
So it, it's changed. Initially, no. When, when this was first offered, you, you had to go onsite. I mean, you just weren't going to have the machines that you needed to be able to play the game, the games offered or the games that we'd be interested in. But that has changed with, with the evolution of esports. And I think with companies recognizing that, you know, there is a need, there is an interest there, that they can develop the technology to make it a little more accessible.
I'm so sorry. Jacqueline, what was your first question? Sorry.
Oh, there was a, a club that was happening with us a couple of years ago.
Yeah, pre-COVID, there was a, there was a club that was, that was functioning.
Okay. Do you remember what the participation was then?
I, I wasn't part of it.
No, okay.
So I don't, I could access that, I'm sure.
Is it, is this a more of a pilot program, or is this from once this is going forward? Like, it'll be?
I would like this to.
It'll come in next year, whether you get the grants or not, or is this something that will be added in?
Obviously, those are conversations that need to be had, but ultimately, I would like this to be something that becomes part of what we offer.
And this was included in the budget process, correct? Because I remember talking about this when we were talking about the budget last year.
We, we likely talked about earmarking some intramural funds for an advisor.
Okay, yeah, because I remember.
Yeah, I, yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, and I can't remember if it was included in the numbers or not.
I do remember.
Okay.
I think the potential of sort of attracting different kids into a club and really engaging, because the kids are playing these. And here, it's around creating a community where they're working together and collaborating and problem solving. And so I think it's a real great opportunity to engage different students in an activity that they are doing, but are doing sort of on their own, and really creating a community that can sustain over several years. And we'll see how student interest is. Obviously, if there's not a lot of student interest, then we may not continue it. But we'd like to try to give it a shot because there are students who have expressed interest.
I think we've done a lot of talk about social and emotional health of our students. And we've talked pretty explicitly about how the sports program is a factor of resiliency for our community. And I think this being something that can bring people in, give people the experience of belonging in the same way the other sports program does in a way that misses a lot of the non-athlete students. I think I'm looking at this really as social, emotional.
Do you think you could come back at the end of the year and give us an update?
Absolutely.
Okay, that'd be great.
Maybe some of the students.
I was, yeah, I'm picturing that. And my, the last several presentations haven't quite met the standard of handing out docs, so that would help me spice it up a little bit.
I mean, I think it's got a lot of merit to it. My only concern is just budget, budget impact. And I, it sounds like it's relatively small dollar budget impact, as well as there are funds available to pay it. That's, that was my only potential concern.
I had the same thing. As long as they're covered in the intramural budget, then the funds are there. My concerns about the budget, I'm.
Understood.
Yeah. And I'm pretty sure we did talk about it last year. And it, it might even be somewhere in the budget packet that it was going to be included in the intramural. But yeah, thank you.
And it seems like it's set up in a way that's not going to take away from the other existing sports. I'm guessing if a kid plays the sport right now, they're probably not going to drop the sport to do esports.
It's hard to say until we really get going and we see the kids that are, that are in front of us.
Unless they're injured, maybe. It might be.
That's true. It might be a good.
Kids will get injured or not.
Sure, sure. The target, kids are going to make decisions, and they're going to go to the activities that they're, that they're interested in. You know, what I was trying to get ahead of is, this is really more focused on engaging kids that aren't engaged outside of the, the school day or even at all.
Yeah.
And not that we're looking to, you know, take that active component of, of participation, physical activity and take, and limiting that in any way. Maybe in some ways, we can, you know, some of the simulations that, that I have seen in, in trainings in the past, there, there is sort of a, a low-level physical component that gets added into the esports experience that, that maybe we can help.
Dance revolution?
Yeah. That's okay.
Okay. So does anybody in the community have any questions? If you could raise your hand. Okay, so does anybody in the community have any questions? If you could raise your hand. Okay.
Um, yes, I will make a motion to approve the fee for esports program at Ham High School.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So you're going to stay there?
I will stay here.
So the next one is to approve overnight and out-of-state athletic field trips and act as appropriate.
So we have two hockey field, scrimmage field trips. The girls will have two scrimmages, the boys have three scrimmages and a trip to UVM. These are both upwards of five to six years with one-year COVID break renewals. And then the ski, the ski trips are literally our league schedule. We just happen to ski in- in New Hampshire.
Does anybody have any questions? Anybody in the community have any questions? Getting better at this. Does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the girls' hockey field trip to St. Albans High School in Vermont on December eighth through December ninth.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And I'll make a motion to approve the boys' hockey overnight trip to Burlington, Vermont, December ninth through December tenth.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And last one for Jim is to review requests for athletic waivers.
I'm sorry to interrupt, we have the ski regular season schedule there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Which one, oh, didn't see it?
Nope, sorry, I didn't see that one either. Sorry. And then a third one, to approve the boys' and girls' ski team overnight.
Those are just day trips.
Or day trips, sorry, on December sixteenth, January sixth, January twenty-first, January twenty-seventh, February fourth, February tenth up at Ragged Mountain, Danbury, New Hampshire.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now the trips are done. So nine point seven, to review requests for athletic waivers for the fall and winter sports and act as appropriate.
So in your packet, you have the explanation of how the MIA uses district athletic committees to approve cooperative teams and middle-level waivers. In the fall, we did not have any waivers. In the winter, we will be renewing a gymnastics cooperative team with Hull. I would anticipate nine Hingham student athletes participating and really hoping for three student athletes from Hull. And then in girls' ice hockey, a renewal of an eighth-grade waiver for ju- for the junior varsity team only. The way the waiver was applied for within our league is junior varsity only. The way our numbers look, the DAC and the MIA say that the eighth graders can participate only at the lowest level offered and we do anticipate a JV team. If anything changed in those numbers, I would need to start this process all over again if we were considering trying to use eighth graders. And then one last thing. As a school or as a league, we can always vote to strengthen the rules that the state association gives us. And at our last principal AD meeting, we did update our league bylaws to say that not until the third day of practice or tryouts can eighth graders join the activity. So that we can see that the numbers that we anticipated are actually the numbers that are in front of us and then we don't have to deal with some of the concerns that jump up when eighth graders have been told that they can participate based on numbers and then that reality changes. And so that will be how we will operate this year if approved.
Yeah, that's great. Any questions?
My only hope, yeah, sorry. Based on my own experience, like, I feel like girls' hockey is absolutely taking off. Do we anticipate at some point we will not need this? Like, I'm actually kind of surprised we don't have enough to have a varsity and a junior varsity.
My, my answer to that question for any team here at Hingham using an eighth-grade waiver would be that it's always a year-to-year and that yes, that would be the goal to not do that. The MIA puts this in place and allows access to the eighth graders only if it preserves the high school experience. And so when the numbers on that JV team are such that we wouldn't be able to sustain a team, that's when you're in that position that you would access. One of the things that we're finding in the region is that the ISL schools are- are really attracting a large population of of female ice hockey players and that that seems to, whether real or perceived, to be the ticket to that next level. This has been, these numbers have been fairly steady though, even COVID during- during my seven years in this range. There was one blip year coming out of COVID, but we've kind of rebounded back to where we were.
I'm sorry, did you say how many eighth graders were looked for waivers?
No.
You don't know yet?
We don't know yet. We don't know yet. We just need to anticipate that we're going to be fourteen or under with what would be on that JV team.
Got it.
And that's what we're forecasting right now.
It obviously doesn't matter for approval, but I'm just curious if the gymnastics team is girls, boys, or co-ed?
It could be co-ed.
It could be co-ed.
It could be co-ed. We do not offer a boys' gymnastics team, but at this time, in my time, and here's my seventh year, males have not accessed the team yet.
Anyone in the community have any questions?
You want a motion? You want two?
I think so.
Yep, I think so too. Okay, so the first motion would be to approve a waiver to allow for a cooperative team partnering with Hull for a gymnastics team.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Second, second motion is to approve a waiver for the potential use of eighth graders for the girls' ice hockey. These student athletes would compete at the junior varsity level only if allowed.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, nine point eight, to discuss the naming of a new elementary school and act as appropriate. Pass this over to Dr. Adams.
So you have a memo sharing some data with you on the results of the survey and some of the background work done to support sort of gathering of feedback from the community around the naming of the new elementary school. We had a survey of over six hundred stakeholders who responded to the survey. You have a breakdown of who responded. Twenty-six percent were students, twenty-eight percent approximately parents, nine percent approximately staff, eleven percent alumni and thirteen percent other community members. You have a breakdown of the names that were suggested overall, the most popular names that were suggested indicating over two hundred, two-hundred-nineteen responses for Foster combined with William L. Foster and W.M. Foster were another smaller group. There were some seventy-eight responses for North and then Crow Point, fifty-one responses. Those were the most popular overall and then there's some additional names that were suggested. In the survey, responses, respondents were also asked to provide the reasons for their selections. The comments generally reflected several common themes. Name the new elementary school around geographical locations such as North, Bear Cove, West or Crow Point. Considering then keeping the name the same, Foster, it's a strong part of the identity of the school. A variety of other names were suggested to reflect the strong history of Hingham, including Melville, James Tuttle, Benjamin Lincoln and a variety of other names were suggested of individuals who've honored the town for their service in multiple ways. Matt Shifely, principal of Foster, also engaged his conversations with school council and the PTO. They really strongly felt that Foster was a major part of the school's identity. Many alumni identify with the name of Foster. I think understanding, he went back and also asked, you want the name Foster or William, William Foster? There was a sense that Foster was the right name. However, I think in a second survey, we likely would want to distinguish and have respondents say, if you only had two choices, which one would you choose, Foster or William Foster? So we really get a sense of what the-
Or W.M. Foster.
Or W.M. Foster, yeah. The students were also asked for feedback and you have their results as well. They overwhelmingly thought Foster as well as William L. Foster combined were the highest ratings and then there was some other, Crow Point. And they also suggested Harborside was one of the names that they felt came up a couple times, especially among the fifth graders for some reason.
Yeah.
I like rainbow, I know.
Like the rainbow is a real split with the support coming from the kindergartners and the fifth graders. Yeah.
My recommendation at this point is to do the second survey because remember, we have to do this in January in order to make sure it gets on the warrant for town meeting is to start a second survey with the top four or five choices identified in the first round as well as a second question to say if it was Foster, which of the two would be okay? And so that we could get that data collected through the next month and then month and a half and come back in January with those results so the committee could make a final decision. So those top four or five choices are Foster, William L. Foster, Crow Point and North, unless we wanted to add a fifth one in there as well.
And just to clarify, by committee making a decision of what to recommend to town meeting, town meeting has to still vote on the name.
I mean, those fifth graders seem to be working pretty hard for Harborside.
We could certainly add that into the choices.
I just don't want to upset the fifth graders. They're a mean crew.
Well, it's also combined with Harbor School, which I believe did come up in the other survey as well. Harborside and Harbor also came up a couple of times.
That could be part of the tagline, Foster Elementary School, a Harborside.
We'd have to pay for each letter we might-
On the sign, it might not be in the budget.
You are a budget hawk tonight, Michelle.
I've been on the building committee waiting.
It's going to make a bigger sign.
So do we want an add, do we want to add another one, that Harborside?
I'm-
Just an odd to the fifth grader?
Sure.
Why not? I like it.
Okay.
Didn't get much recognition in the poll, but I like Benjamin Lincoln.
How many did it get? So we're doing that, it is the top five, right? Or top four, if you combine the two Fosters.
Yeah, combine those three Fosters.
Three Fosters.
We could combine.
Student want the Harborside, but if you look in the other-
Yes, yes.
So can I ask that question?
What was this top student one? The top student?
Foster or William L. Foster. So that was my question. So, I mean, I'm all for gathering all this information, but like, do we really think we're going to not do the Foster or William L. Foster based on this? And is there a need to push this out to get more information and have people fill surveys out?
I think we said we'd do a second survey after collecting the information and give the chance for the community to give you feedback.
And our policy does say we go back.
Yeah, and you, and many people reference that. I'm waiting for the second survey so I can make that final decision.
I think you do have your finger on the pulse of the community, though. I'm a red-bettin' man.
You know, at the bus stop, it's a hundred percent, I'm Foster, it's a hundred percent Foster.
Discriminating between Foster and William-
No, I don't know that, that I don't know.
I'm just, that's what I'm just sort of wondering about, like, are people even thinking that that's a different name? You know what I mean? Like, are people even thinking, call it Foster and they're thinking, well, yeah, I meant William L. Foster? Or are they really thinking of it as a separate name? I'm almost wondering.
I doubt it. I think it's like when they're just looking at the number, looking at the survey, they just, they might not even have noticed.
Well, they had to write in the name that they were suggesting, so it wasn't a checkbox.
And I was at the school council meeting and they, we talked about the differentiation between William L. Foster or just Foster and they, it seemed like they wanted Foster because they have all their taglines based on Foster, Foster community, Foster this. They didn't care as much about the William L. is what my sense was from the council.
All right, so people are expecting other surveys, so another survey is, yep.
Okay, do we need to act on this?
No, I'll just take your feedback. I'll add, I'll combine, I heard you say combine maybe Foster and William L. Foster, add a Harborside and maybe a question to say if it was called Foster, which one should it be, Foster or William L. Foster?
I think so. Yeah, I think that makes sense, yep. Okay. Does anybody in the community have any questions or comments?
Disappointed schoolie, McSchoolface didn't make the panel.
I know, not even one. Not one.
Make a comeback.
All right, so the next two, nine point nine and nine point ten, are just standard agenda items and we don't have anything to discuss tonight. It's the to discuss grants and donations and to remove surplus materials. So we'll move on to item ten, subcommittee and project reports and more on the signed. Matt?
So HEF, we talked already about the great spelling bee that took place last Sunday and we have our next meeting tomorrow night with HEF and East School Council had the first meeting last Monday that I unfortunately wasn't able to attend, but focused on goal one of the school meeting.
Do we know the names of the winning teams? A shout-out? I don't know.
Nine names.
Huh?
Nine names.
I just meant the team names.
Team names.
I don't know.
There's some great team names.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was great team names. A lot of creativity.
Probably had B in it.
Yeah.
Ellie?
Hingham Arts has a board meeting tomorrow evening and policies meeting on the twenty-eighth and I will give a very brief update on the resolutions from the mask assembly at the conference. Carrie and I both were there at the conference. There's a lot of great panels and discussions were presented that we missed it because they put the time wrong, but we planned to be there to watch her. But Carrie, I'll open some of that and we can definitely write up some notes. There was some really good feedback and ideas from it. The resolutions, I will just start by saying it was a little chaotic. We didn't get through all of them. I actually didn't stay for all of it because it was very many hours into it and it didn't seem to be moving towards any resolutions on some of them. But it was voted to amend the bylaw, which is interesting. There was a lot of resolutions that have been sitting for years and years and never gotten any works to amend the bylaw. So resolutions do officially expire unless a committee puts in for them to be readopted after three years. So just to know moving forward if we ever have any resolutions. Resolution one, which was full stable funding for NECO, did get approved ninety-two to three. There was not a fair amount of discussion, ultimately approved though pretty handily. Resolution two, regarding investigations and recommendations for transportation bidding procedures was also approved unanimously, but no discussion. Only one. Where is solution three was regarding regional transportation. This one failed mostly because a lot of school committees had concerns about asking people to pay for transportation. There was some issue about climate change with people driving, being asked to drive cars as opposed to using bus transportation. And also, there's a lot of concern about setting the precedent with the state that districts would cover bus transportation for students and that piece of the budget instead of having a hundred percent reimbursement, which is specific to regional transportation. But so there's a lot of concern about setting that precedent and that instead, applicating to the state for paying the full amount. And then the last one that I was there for was the diversity, equity and inclusion proposal, which was a recommendation for people to have a point person or a DEI manager within this or committee, within the school district. That was the big discussion was what exactly was it? Was it committee? Was it an individual who would be assigned to it? And there was a lot of amendments to the amendments and changes in words and ultimately it got tabled until a future date, unfortunately. So when I had the other four resolutions updates, a bunch of them got tabled, a bunch of them, they didn't make it to our two guys.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
We had the educational programming subcommittee on the first and we looked over, we got the original crack at the beginning of the year data and we also talked about the pathways program. And we also talked about dual enrollment and finally, we talked about the preschool planning for the next year. There's not another meeting scheduled yet. Probably happened in- Uh, there's not another meeting scheduled yet, probably happened in the new year.
Carrie?
Uh, Hingham Middle School Council met on, uh, November 6th. Um, it was a hybrid Zoom meeting, so that, and that seemed to work out well for some, especially for some of the parents. Um, they had their Veterans Day celebration on, um, the 9th. Jen Driscoll, who's one of the social studies teachers at the middle school, organized it, and it went from, all accounts, did a great job. I couldn't go through the AMAC, but, um, it heard really good things. Um, the eighth graders went to East and worked with, uh, third graders on cards to send to veterans. Um, they hired a second nurse in the, for the filling the parapositions, they're almost fully staffed there, so that was good. Um, let's see, they had their one book, one school, um, they read links this year, um, and there were a lot of compliments from the parents on that, the presentation, so it went with that, and it was, it was very well received. And then the community rep at the middle school council, it works at the library, um, as you mentioned, that they've updated the newspaper archives, and they were going to host a Zoom to teach kids how to use it for research purposes, so that's cool. So our negotiations, we continue to meet with Unit A of the teachers, um, B, the paraprofessionals, C, the custodians, and D, the administrative assistants. Um, we are meeting with Unit A tomorrow, and then Unit B on Thursday. AMAC, it was great, um, it was really well-attended this year compared to past years. Um, the theme was equity and implementing equity plans. Now, a lot of districts are a little further along in that work, and kind of walking the walk. Um, a lot of the panels talked about how to have discussions that will come up as, um, as, as we do that work and kind of recognize the humanity in the other side of people, instead of getting really entrenched, because we're living in divisive times, and it's kind of like, how do you, okay, how do you get past that? And like, and bring people along, but also be able to listen and figure out where they're coming from. So it was, I thought that was really helpful. Um, there needs Amati Jackson, give keynote speaker a speech, and, yeah, you remember her, she was, she was fabulous. It was really good, and it was also along those lines. And I also attended panels on special education law and the new IEP format, um, and then one on collective bargaining, which was very helpful. Um, there was also a fascinating presentation on artificial intelligence and how it impacts students in schools. And it was, it was really, it was given by Justin Reich, who's a former history teacher, who now teaches at MIT, and works with undergrads there. And, um, it was just fascinating to look at what this tool looks like, and I actually walked away a little less scared of it after doing it. So it reminded us, we always had calculators and Cliff Notes and things that, um, could, you know, impact learning. And it's like, if you look at some of the things we've learned from, you know, using those and apply it to AI, it's, it's not so scary. So that was kind of, that was good. Um, so anyway, AMAC is going to be sharing the presentation, so we can share anything with people, there's a lot of good information.
Thank you.
And there are warrants in your pocket. Um, policy, not policy, go back a year, sorry. It's getting long. Finance, uh, we won't be meeting this Friday, but we will be meeting next month, that we have a regular scheduled meeting for next month. Um, and South School, School Council, we met two weeks ago, and see the, the work there.
Okay, um, I, um, spoke with Matt about doing office hours, so he graciously agreed to do that with me. We'll get a date out there, um, as soon as we have one coordinated. I don't have anything, um, hang on, let me look. No, there was nothing else, okay.
Um, I don't have any updates, but High School Council is having its first meeting on Wednesday, um, as is School Building Committee Wednesday, so, um, those two kind of means.
Um, okay, so any other items not reasonably known within 48 hours? Okay, um, one thing before we adjourn, um, the next meeting, November 27th, so the select board approved, um, they went and updated and approved their naming policy, um, at their last select board meeting. It requires two weeks' notice before we take a possible vote on a name. So we'll have to go through this process for the new elementary school, but we are going to be discussing the Wellness Center as well. Um, so Dr. Adams had pulled together a memo, and had sent it to the town just to give them the heads-up that we are going to be discussing, uh, naming the Wellness Center at our next meeting. We'll also share that to the, hang on, is it the journal?
Yep.
Okay, to the journal as well.
I want it today to be posted this week.
Oh, great, okay, so that, um, we have notification out there. I wanted to make that public here as well. Um, okay, that's it. Next meeting is November 27th at 6:30, the one after that is December 11th at 6:30. And that's here.
Here.
Yes.
Sorry. Take a motion to adjourn?
Please.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, we are adjourned.